Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of Internet services, including Mega Backup Cloud Service, Server Colocation, T1, Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as Hosted PBX and Digital Voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Order, meeting of Monday, June 6, 2022, at 6:00 PM of the Falmouth Select Board. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And first on our agenda is committee interviews and appointments. I would ask the board, you have all received information on new applicants, so we will call people up. We have one minute to speak with new people, and then we will move on the appointments. So for the first Regulatory Board, Board of Assessors, Brian Ridgeway. Is Brian Ridgeway here?
Apparently not.
No. Do I have a motion?
It's a reappointment.
Right. Do I have a motion?
I would move approval for Brian Ridgeway.
For a term ending June 30th of 2025.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Third.
Board of Health, George Huelfelder.
Jim, he's in a meeting right now.
Right. Without hesitation, I would move that we appoint George Huelfelder to a term ending June 30th of 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Conservation Commission, Jamie Matthews. Hello, Mr. Matthews.
Sorry I showed up.
Good evening, Jamie Matthews here for reappointment to Conservation.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we appoint Jamie Matthews to the Conservation Commission for a term ending June 30th to 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Jamie has served as the Chair of that committee for a long time, and I have tremendous respect on behalf of that committee, and he handles and manages it very well. And barely, I might add, too.
Courtney Byrd. Where's Courtney? Longtime member as well.
I've served on the Conservation Commission, I think since Methuselah was a child, somewhere around 2003. It's all about service to the community. We have a very good, well-working, smooth-running board. I'd like to be a part of it. Thank you.
I would motion to reappoint Courtney Byrd to the Conservation Commission.
The term ending June 30th, 2025. Yes, that's my motion, or second to yours, however you wish.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Melissa Freitag. Hi, Melissa.
Good evening. Good evening, Board. I'm Melissa Freitag. I've thrown my name in the hat for Conservation Commission. I've been a public service servant on Cape Cod since the mid-'90s and here in Falmouth since, oh, 2005, starting with the Historical Commission, which is also Regulatory Commission. I don't even think I included that on my application there. It was all filled in. Most recently in town, I served on the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee as the Vice Chair. I strongly suggest that the Board repost some similar committee because it will save the town hundreds of thousands of dollars in costs in the future. But in the meantime, I'm here to throw my name in the ring for Conservation Commission. And I believe the Chair supports my candidacy.
Thank you.
I would move that we appoint Melissa Freitag to a term ending June 30th of 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Historical Commission, Edward Hadad.
Good afternoon, I'm Ed Hadad. I'm the current Chairman of the Historical Commission. I've been involved with either Historic Districts Commission or the Historical Commission since 2006, and I'm looking for a reappointment.
Happy to move that we appoint Ed Hadad to a position on the Historical Commission for a term ending June 30th of 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks so much, Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Indeed.
Tamsin George.
This seems like an annual thing. I was here a year ago and a year before that, and so here I am back again for appointment to the Historical Commission.
I'm going to help you out. I'm going to move that we appoint Tamsin George to the Committee for a term ending June 30th of 2025.
Wow, Sam. Three years, every three years now.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
George, we already appointed you.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, George.
I know, but he jumped ahead of me. Mason Wilcox.
This is for an alternate. Alternates are what remain.
Hello, I'm seeking to be back on the Historical Commission. I was on seven years ago, but the military moved me away and came back, and I have a home in the Historical District and love to be part of it, and it convinced me to come back.
Well, come get back.
I move that we appoint Mason Wilcox to the alternate position, the term ending June 30th of 2024.
Second, Mr. Patterson's motion.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Welcome back. Zoning Board of Appeals. Did I miss one?
No, they withdrew.
Oh, he withdrew, okay. Yes. That's okay, thanks for asking. Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Potamus.
Jerry Potamus, looking for a full appointment. You have my resume. I've been up here a number of times. I'll defer to your questions.
Questions from the Board?
I have one. Mr. Potamus, what is your opinion of the open meeting law?
The open meeting law?
What's your opinion of it?
It's a law that should be followed as best we can.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we appoint Jerry Potamus to a term on the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term ending June 30th of 2027.
Yes, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Suzanne Murphy.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Murphy. I applied for this in September, but didn't get on, and I'm back to reapply. I have quite a bit of experience on zoning in another town.
Questions from the Board?
I would just comment that I'm pretty impressed by your record and service in other towns, and welcome to Falmouth.
Thank you.
I have a question, Suzanne.
Sure.
How often do you attend the current zoning board meetings?
In your town?
Correct.
I watch them at home, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and I watch you guys, too.
Madam Chairman, I was unable to complete the resume, the application notifications. I tried to follow up with the people that she had standing for her, and I tried to call the town manager, and I was unable to get it, so I don't have enough information to make a qualified decision on it.
Well, I would move that we appoint Suzanne Murphy to a position on the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending June 30th of 2025.
I would second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I see the vote again? Opposed? No.
Is that a yes?
Yes, you're on.
You're on. Scott Peterson.
Scott is traveling. We got a note from him.
Yes.
But I would move his appointment. He's been serving as an alternate, and I think he's highly qualified.
I would second that.
As for a term ending June 30th, 2024?
Yes, thank you.
All those in favor?
Before you do that, there's only one appointment open for 14 more days, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Are we bypassing that now? We just, we have one to fill for 2025, and we just appointed Suzanne for how long?
But to 2024, so that's a two-year term.
Right, but isn't one appointment, Ed Van Keren's appointment is up in 14 days.
I don't know. We weren't given that information.
For Zoning Board of Appeals, we have a term until 6/30/27, a term until 6/30/25, and one term until 6/30/24.
Mr. Dugan isn't off yet. He still has one more meeting, doesn't he? Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry, but that's, we can't appoint for a longer position that's not available yet.
Well, you can appoint to a date certain. You could, the Board could appoint with an effective date certain. So I apologize, I was under the impression...
I may be mistaken.
Yeah, I was under the impression that the vacancy was available at this time, but I don't have recent confirmation from Rob Dugan in writing as to the exact date that he settled on for swearing in.
I just don't want to make a mistake.
Right.
I'm up, and unfortunately, Mr. Van Keren passed away, so those two seats were available. One of those two seats is up in 14 days, and the third seat isn't available yet.
Well, I mean, Mr. Van Keren passed away, so that seat's available immediately.
Absolutely.
Right. And your seat is available immediately.
Okay, so that's two seats. All right. My apologies.
Can we, yes, can we relook at Scott Peterson?
I motion, I motion to the appointment.
Aye, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to the non-regulatory boards. Affordable Housing Committee, Gina Torrielli. Hi, Gina.
Hi, Gina Torrielli, Precinct 2, for the Affordable Housing Committee.
I'll move that we appoint Gina Torrielli to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David Garrison.
Good evening, I'm Dave Garrison, applicant for the Affordable Housing Committee.
I can certainly attest to Mr. Garrison's dedication to the town. I know he helps out with high school students, seen and worked and talked to him, almost drafted even for a trip to Guatemala. But his background, as you can see in his resume, is outstanding and represents, you know, knowledge of the kind of laws and death regulations that need to be addressed when we're looking at affordable housing. So I'm happy to move that we appoint David Garrison to a term ending, I think the one that's remaining is 2024.
No, I think there's a second one for June 30th, 2025.
Well, then I would definitely go for the longer trip.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beach Committee, Heather Burke.
Good evening, I'm Heather Burke, applying for the Beach Committee position with the full support of Barb Schneider. I live across from Falmouth Heights Beach. I understand that the committee acts as an advisory role to you and the importance of the safety and sustainability of Falmouth beaches.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Any questions from the Board?
No.
I would move that we appoint Heather Burke to a position on the Beach Committee for a term ending June 30th of 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, Nathaniel Clark.
I'm Nathaniel Clark. I'm applying for the committee. I'm a regular rider of the Shining Seas Bike Path and believe it's one of the greatest resources we have in the town, and I'd like to extend my efforts to keep it in good shape, but also to extend further other biking opportunities and walking opportunities in Falmouth, and to keep Falmouth safe in regard to those that choose to use the bike path and also the streets.
Thank you. Questions from the Board?
I would move that we appoint Nathaniel Clark to a position on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee for a term ending June 30th of 2025.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Spall Withdrawal.
Yes.
That's all right, okay, thank you.
Hi, Doug.
Peter Millie.
I reviewed his resume, and I would be happy to move that we appoint Peter Millie to a term ending June 30th of 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Catherine Jansen.
Good evening. My name's Catherine Jansen. I've applied to be on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Mass Bike, the statewide nonprofit that encourages people to get out and cycle safely. I volunteer for neighborhood Falmouth, and I'm an avid rider. I rode 100 miles today, as a matter of fact, so I'm going to fall over shortly.
Entertain a motion.
Sounds like good qualifications to me, so I will move that we appoint Catherine Jansen to the Beach Committee for a term ending June...
Bicycle and pedestrian.
Excuse me, to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee for a term ending June 30th of 2024.
Second.
Uh, I was trying to keep track of...
There's two for 2025, and we did one...
Yep.
Yeah, so it's 2025.
Okay, let's do 2025 then.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Cape Light Compact, Scott Mueller.
Madam Chair, as Mr. Mueller is approaching the podium, I wanted to update the Board that we do have interest from another individual who previously served as the Board's representative for Cape Light Compact. That was not received in time to be included on the agenda, so if the Board wishes to take that into consideration before you vote in a appointment tonight, I wanted that information. I wanted you to have that information. That individual's Matthew Patrick.
Is it true that there's only one position available?
That's correct.
Good evening, Scott Mueller. I have been a energy attorney in Massachusetts for 35 years. I'm retiring from full-time practice in 25 days, but who's counting? And looking to keep active and make a contribution to the community. Should the incumbent want to continue in the position, I'm also interested in serving on the Energy Committee, and would be happy to defer to that application if that's appropriate.
Any questions from the Board?
I would just comment that I worked with Scott on a renovation at his house, and he was a pleasure to work with, and I'm sure he'd be an asset to any group.
Are you willing to work on both committees?
Um, sure.
I just want to comment, I thought it was a very impressive application and resume that was sent in.
Thank you.
Obviously, great experience.
Well, then I would move that we appoint Scott Mueller to Cape Light Compact, excuse me, for a term ending June 30th of 2024.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel on Aging, Brenda Swain. The Board was notified that Brenda is unable to be here tonight, but I certainly, she is known in the community, and I certainly would move to appoint her to the Counsel on Aging.
Term is June 30th of 2025.
2025.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd just like to mention and thank Jim Viera, whose term is up with the Counsel on Aging. He served from September 2012 and has been the Chair of the Counsel on Aging since 2013. He also served as the Chair for the Site Feasibility Group when looking to build a new senior center, and he was the Building Committee Chair, so I just really want to thank Jim Viera for his commitment to the Counsel on Aging, his commitment to the senior center, and certainly his commitment to Falmouth. We appreciate you. Thank you.
He should probably get a plaque at the senior center.
His name is already on the wall.
He's been there for a long time.
Good.
Cultural Council, Susan Stern. Susan here?
I'm Susan Stern, and I'm hoping to become a contributing member of the Cultural Council.
Questions from the Board?
Pretty good description here, reasons for wanting to be on it.
Indeed, and good reasons for us to have her on.
Yes.
So I will move that we appoint Susan Stern to the Cultural Council for a term ending June 30th, 2025.
Thank you.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Human Services Committee?
Well, we have the Energy Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry, Energy Committee.
Since Scott said he's willing to serve on two different committees, I would ask, I would move that we appoint Scott Mueller to the Energy Committee for a term ending June 30th of 2024.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Doubleheader, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you. Human Services Committee, Kathleen Salt. Not sure I'm pronouncing her name correctly.
I thought, I thought her application was great. My only concern was that she has not attended any of the meetings thus far.
Okay, do we, would the Board like to wait and schedule another interview?
Is there room to do that? I mean, they have a quorum, right?
I believe they do.
In the case of...
That's a fair question.
In the case of a board that has a quorum...
They have three available, three available positions, a little short.
Well, I mean, looking at her application...
They have a quorum just barely.
I think they have a quorum as well, but...
I would urge the Chair, if they do have a quorum and you need more information, certainly push that off a meeting, right?
We can, yes.
I would like to do that.
Okay, so we will defer, we will hold on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I would ask that Diane Davidson be job and be scheduled. Thank you very much. Sandwich Road Fire Station Building Committee, John Elliott.
Good evening, my name's John Elliott. I've been serving as the alternate member on the Sandwich Road Fire Station Committee, and I'm seeking to fill the vacant permanent member.
Any questions from the Board?
No, just a comment. I can't think of anybody better qualified.
Oh, thank you.
I'm happy to move that we appoint John Elliott to the position, and let's see, where's the term, what is it?
Until completion.
Oh, until completion, I think is the way it's worded, so.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Scott Peterson, as we know he's away. What would the Board, would you have a motion? Would the Board like to defer?
I can comment in Scott's defense in his absence that he worked at CMAS as one of the managers for quite some time. He knows a lot about solid waste and the management of it, so I think he'd be good for this if he's willing to do it.
I would concur with Mr. Brown's assessment. He's very talented at that.
Yeah.
Am I taking that as a motion?
That is a motion, yes, ma'am.
Term ending June 30th of 2025.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Water Quality Management Committee, Steve Leighton.
Hi, my name is Steve Leighton. I guess I'm applying for reappointment. I was on the committee for 10 years and took the obligatory year off for term limits, and I'd like to get back on.
Any questions from the Board of Mr. Leighton?
No, in fact, I can attest, Steve has been a contributor on that committee for a long time, and I'm happy to move that we appoint him to the Water Quality Management Committee again, this time for a term ending June 30th of 2025.
I would second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, next, we're going to vote committee reappointments, and they are uncontested seats, and I'm going to recuse myself for a minute.
You can vote on these...
No, we're going to do them individually.
Individually, okay.
Okay, so the first uncontested seat is the Committee for Affirmative Action. The incumbent is Terry Alves Hunter for a term ending June 30th, 2025. There is any discussion. I would like to say that I have concerns that as a member of the committee, she has gone beyond the scope of the, of the committee as a member, and that concerns me.
I understand the committee's unable to meet right now because there's the controversy, and I think maybe this, there's one appointment we might want to defer or put off until whatever is going on is squared away.
That seems appropriate.
I would agree.
Okay. Do I need to make a motion to defer, or we can just defer?
If we don't act... Moore, do you have any suggestions in terms of, is it advisable to simply not act, or is it advisable to have a motion to defer?
I don't think you could do either. Okay, I'd like to take a motion to defer.
I'll second the Chair's motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We can bring Nancy back in.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so we're onto Agricultural Commission. Okay, Agricultural Commission, Karen Schwab, term ending 6/30/25. Jack Simons, term ending 6/30/25.
I move approval or move that we appoint him.
Reappoint him?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bike and Pedestrian Committee, Neil Aluru.
That's correct.
Uh, term ending 6/30/25. Edward Gross, term ending 6/30/25.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cable Advisory Committee, Michael Eater, term ending 6/30/25.
So move.
Second.
I've got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative, Rosemary Carey, term ending 6/30/25.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative, Ray Jack, term ending 6/30/24.
Oh, especially. So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commission on Substance Use, Beverly Seavola, term ending 6/30/25.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Constable Ronald Braga, term ending 6/30/25.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council on Aging, Elizabeth Hike, term ending 6/30/25.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cultural Council, Marilyn Roland, term ending 6/30/25.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. EDIC, Mark Lowenstein, Thomas Ferranti, both terms ending 6/30/25.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Energy Committee, Rosemary Carey, term ending 6/30/25.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Human Services Committee, Deb Burgland, term ending 6/30/25.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you intentionally skip the Golf Committee?
No.
Advisory Committee?
Golf Advisory Committee, Bob Pachico, term ending 6/30/25.
So move.
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you purposely jump ahead of me?
Deduction line.
No.
Recreation Committee, Bob Brown, Michael Healan, both terms ending 6/30/25.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Shellfish Advisory Committee, Scott Lindell, Brian Ridgway, John Sylvia Jr., all terms ending 6/30/25.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's senior though, just to be clear.
What did I say?
Said junior.
Oh, did I? Sorry. Steamship Authority Port Council, Robert Munier, term ending 6/30/24. All those in favor? I mean, motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upper Cape Regional Water Supply Cooperative, Ray Jack, term ending 6/30/24.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Veterans Council Committee, Robert Foose, Paula Smith, both terms ending 6/30/23.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Water Quality Management Committee, Thomas Duncan, term ending 6/30/25.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Waterways Committee, Joseph Voce, Charles Eastman, both terms ending 6/30/25.
So moved. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks to all of them for continuing to serve.
Yes, the committees are incredibly important and do incredible work in this town, so thank you.
Here.
Okay, proclamation. Sam, would you like to read the proclamation?
Oh, be a pleasure. Whereas the town of Falmouth is home to a large number of Portuguese-American people and whereas the Portuguese culture is praiseworthy and world famous and whereas Luiz Vas de Camo, Cam.
Camoas?
Cam, uh.
Camoas?
It's pronounced differently and I can't come up with the exact pronunciation. Uh, Camu, I think is the way it is. Uh, the famous 16th century epic poet is a symbol of Portuguese cultural achievements and is honored by Portuguese people the world over on this day. And whereas members of the friends of the Portuguese have formed an association to force, foster Portuguese culture and instill a pride of heritage. And whereas a committee was organized to plan the celebration of these events, the Day of Portugal, the remembrance of the dearly departed. And whereas Falmouth joins with other Portuguese communities in recognition of Luiz Vas de Camo, great, his great accomplishment of recording Portugal's notable and remarkable history to be promoted this, to this, on this day. Now therefore, we, Nancy R. Taylor, Angelie Scott Price, Samuel H. Patterson, Douglas C. Brown and Scott Zalinski as select board of the town of Falmouth, by the authority vested on us, do hereby proclaim June 11th as Day of Portugal. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed on this sixth day of June 2022.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any recognitions? I'd like to recognize the, the Falmouth school system. I attended the graduation on Saturday and it was incredibly well done. And I just congratulate the, the students, the staff, the parents and certainly the admini- administration.
I, I also was there and had a chance to talk to, well, to listen to the presentations, which I thought were quite mature and really sober in recognizing the challenges that the students have had over the last couple of years. And the fact that half of their high school career was spent in pandemic conditions, they've, they've really weathered an awful lot. And, you know, unfortunately, in speaking to some of the staff, the effects are there, you know, they didn't get through scot-free. So some did, you know, some were able to handle it in stride, but many of them, you know, suffered the scars of, you know, the social depredation, the lack of motivation that you get from being part of a, a community of learners. And I was very much impressed with the comments that were made. And it's, it's, it's nice to see that we have such a strong school system that can help students weather the storm as best that they can.
Thank you. Any other recognitions? Announcements? So we, I just want to announce the Board of Directors of the Portuguese American Association is respectfully requesting that June 11th be declared the Day of Portugal to celebrate their rich heritage of the Portuguese people who have helped make this town what it is.
Madam Chair, I suppose we should announce the Mayflower Wind Forum. We've already announced it, but it's probably a good reminder.
It's also in the Acting Town Manager's Report.
Right.
For, for June 8th.
Okay.
I think, I think he'll probably announce it again with the time and the place.
All right.
But thank you.
Yep.
Any other announcements?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
DPW Director Peter McConerty is here to make an announcement about curbside trash and recycling collection.
Good evening, Peter McConerty, Director of Public Works. Just wanted to report, over the past several weeks, actually it's been ongoing for a bit of time now. We've been having some trash difficulties in, in, in Falmouth for the curbside contract with Republic. And we've been in daily conversations with management of Republic. Not giving any excuses for the company at all. It is in, it's their business plan, it's in there. It's in their ballpark to, to correct the situation, but for the CDL, they're having troubles finding CDL drivers across, with the new regulations that are out and it's basically, most companies right now are having troubles finding qualified CDL drivers. So we're in the process of working with management to have this corrected. And we're doing constant emails. We, we do know that they've been behind last week. They're working on having that corrected this week. My understanding is for trash, they will be caught up by tomorrow. And on recycling, they should be caught up by Wednesday or Thursday. But there seems to be another underlying issue that this is continuing. It's going, it's continuing on, so. I'm looking to set up a meeting with the general manager this, this week to go over the contract, to go over our expectations from the town. I've spent more time today than I would like to. I think I put as many hours as probably the Republic workers into the Republic contract and working with them today. And I have other things that I'd rather be doing, so we can't use all our resources at, at, at Public Works to be dealing with their complaint phone calls and coming in. So I'm trying to set that up with them, to have that worked out this week. We are working with their management teams and coming into our fluctuation season, we want to make sure we get this nipped in the bud now because June, July, August is extremely, where Falmouth can swell to 100,000 people. So we want to have this corrected before, before this thing takes off. But we, we do understand we've had, we've had a lot of work orders come in for the company. We did, Public Works did, to relieve a little bit of the situation and a little bit of the effort, we did open up a waste management facility beginning tomorrow and it'll be opened up to a week from Friday. For any resident that wants to bring trash to the facility, there'll be no charge. And our, our staff will be able to meet them at the gate. We just asked no banned items, no mass DOT banned items. So if you can, you can bring it up there and the gate will let you in. We'll have staff at the top of the hill to direct you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McConerty.
Question.
So, Madam Chair, if I could, I apologize for interrupting, but I, I do want to be mindful of open meeting law and I look forward to having an opportunity to put this on the agenda so we can have more of a dialogue with VPW Director and myself about this matter. So, you know, I would follow the direction of, of Town Council in terms of how much question and answer we want to get into on this unscheduled announcement.
So it is, it is an announcement you've, you've told us. Thank you very much.
Correct. If, if I could just take the time, I was trying to call it up, but I can't connect into the, the, the website. Public Works, we, we send out rave alerts. Anyone that's not set up, this would be a good time to bring this out. We send up rave alerts, we send them out by emails and we send them out by text message. We could do the reverse 91, but we, we, we don't do that for trash and, for trash and recycling. But we do send them up and, and send them out. We sent one out this afternoon. We had 12,000 recipients, recipients. But if you are not signed up for it, if you can get onto the town of Falmouth website and under the news flashes, there is a link from Public Works, I think item three or four down, that you can get on and you can sign up for it. It's pretty simple, but you can receive messages from multiple situations in Falmouth, but one of the items is trash and recycling. So I would, we, we at Public Works would encourage it. We try to get all our information out as accurately as possible to as many residents as we can.
Thank you very much.
And again, Madam Chair, I apologize for the lack of opportunity for discussion. Certainly if any board member wants to reach out to myself or Mr. McConerty, we would welcome that. And again, we can put it on an agenda for discussion.
And then we'll discuss it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote to affirm appointment of the building commissioner.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a declaration out of the abundance of caution. The applicant and I are both members of a private club, but it won't affect my, my judgment one way or the other. I just want to make the other board members aware of that.
Thank you. Welcome, Gary Street.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
I'm very excited to be bringing to you a highly qualified appointee for building commissioner. Gary Street has actually been working as a local inspector for the town since 2002, I believe it is. Yes, sir. He's highly qualified and I've had a chance to get to know him over the last six months or so and I'm confident that he's going to do a fine job for us. So we are seeking the board's affirmation of his appointment. And this is going to be a little bit confusing, but we are not asking you to waive the residency requirement because he actually lives in Falmouth.
Hey.
Aye, that's fabulous. Any questions from the board?
I'm just going to disclose that I'm a contractor and I get building permits sometimes, so I'm going to probably abstain from voting. And that doesn't mean I don't support him.
I move that we support our Accutown Manager's appointment of Gary Street to the building commissioner's position.
Second.
Okay. No, 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 go.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstention, yes.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you for taking it on. Public comment.
Can you say anything, do I?
We didn't have any questions, I don't think.
I'll just say something. The permits are coming out pretty fast lately.
I will say a few words. Since January, we've rolled out permidize and we've issued over 12,000 permits out of our office. Building, remodeling, roofing, plumbing, electric. I've got a team down there of professionals. They know their job. They're the ones that do all the work. They're, they're the ones that run the show. I'm just an orchestrator. And we keep them together and they do a good job. So I, I think you're very fortunate to have the people down there in that building department and they, they really deserve the credit.
That's great to hear. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gary.
We really appreciate it. Okay, public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself. Since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Board of Selectmen may not participate in discussion of the topic. We will not answer questions or engage in debate or conversation. It's not appropriate to use public comment period to comment on any person's reputation, character, physical condition or mental health, disciplinary matters or civil or criminal charges. Comments about job performance and decisions made are permissible. Is there anyone here for public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Hi, my name's Dave Moriarty, resident of Falmouth. I, I'd just like to take this time to remind everyone about the meeting on June 8th at 6:00 PM at the Lawrence School on the Mayflower Wind. Question and answer forum. I encourage everyone, every citizen of Falmouth to attend. This could be your last chance to put an input in on the project. It's very important that the citizens of Falmouth voice their opinion and I encourage everyone to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Town Manager's preliminary report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the consent agenda, there are two items that I would like to highlight for the board and for the public as well. The first is a grant of license for a parking space. That's under Administrative Orders, Item A. And that is a little bit of an unusual situation. I'm advised by the town engineer, Jim McLaughlin, that many of the lots in this neighborhood are undersized and there's limited space for off-street parking. So this license agreement would allow the homeowner to add a third parking spot located within the town right-of-way. And the, the reason it was brought forward for consideration is there are apparently some other homeowners in the area who have installed parking within the town right-of-way without a license agreement. The town is in a better position to maintain its rights with respect to the right-of-way if in fact you have a license agreement which is revocable at any time. So if in the future there are you, that space, that area in the road layout is needed for utilities, sidewalk, sewer, whatever it might be, the town retains its right to that area. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It's, as I said, it's a little bit of an unusual situation. The other item on the consent agenda that I wanted to highlight is Item D. I am asking the board to approve a conflict of interest disclosure for myself. This relates to a compensation study that, that we have funding to conduct and I, I feel it's certainly very important that we have an outside consultant come in and look at the compensation levels for these 45 positions. These are non-union, technical and administrative and management positions. In your packet is the full list of the positions in this group. And the reason that there is a need for disclosure is because I would normally be participating in this process and I, I do need to participate in this process. I need to bring, both to participate in the, in the, in the study itself and then more importantly perhaps, to develop a recommendation for select board adoption with respect to potential changes to the pay plan. And as Acting Town Manager with the permanent position of Assistant Town Manager, one of the positions. with the permanent position of assistant town manager, one of the positions that I will be looking at and that I will be working with the finance director on and bringing to the select board for consideration is my own position.
Thank you.
And again, I will be working with an outside consultant on that compensation study.
Anything else from your report?
So that's it for the consent agenda. With respect to the petition related to surplus police department firearms, the board is pretty well familiar with the issues. We have a petition submitted by Reverend Deborah Warner, which asks the select board to prevent the police department from trading in the semi-automatic long guns that are being replaced. As the board is aware, the police department issued a purchase order to Powderhorn Outfitters, which included the purchase of new long guns and the trade-in of surplus long guns. That was in March, and that transaction was in process but put on hold during the select board's deliberations on this issue. At the last meeting, the select board adopted a policy with respect to the disposition of firearms, and on approval of that policy, I did sign a contract that finalized that transaction. So it finalized the purchase and it finalized the trade-in of those long guns. And you may wish to seek input from Town Council as to whether that contract is reversible at this time. We will later be discussing allocation of county ARPA funds. In consultation with Finance Director Jennifer Mullen, I'm recommending that the select board authorize allocation of the full amount of the ARPA funds that Barnstable County has made available to the town to date, and I'll be prepared to review those amounts in detail with you when we get to that item.
Great.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. So let me ask Town Council before moving on. Is the contract for the surplus police department firearms, is that a binding contract?
It is. It's finalized, it's binding.
Thank you.
Backing out from it now would be a breach of the contract.
Thank you. Okay, let's go through and take a look at the consent agenda. I will read the items. If any board member would like to hold and discuss an item, please indicate so. Licenses, approve applications for six one-day Sunday entertainment licenses for the Falmouth Yacht Club, 290 Clinton Ave., Falmouth, on 6/26, 7/10, 7/31, 8/14, 8/28, 9/4, all from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Do have one question. I don't know if you want to handle it now or just hold it. Is this any different than the one we had brought for last summer, that the neighbors were complaining it was going to block the driveway?
I believe it is similar to what was done in the past. I did not hear through the review process that there had been a problem with this event in the prior year, but if you know of a concern-
Well, we didn't approve it last year the way it was brought to us because it was right next to the person's driveway, and there was concerns that they would spill over and block the driveway. The neighbor had been very concerned about it, so I'm just curious if it's been remodeled.
That was not brought to my attention.
I'm Jay Keyham.
You need to-
My name is Jay Keyham. I'm the general manager of Falmouth Yacht Club. Last year, the permit was approved, and we actually-
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry. Last year, the permit was approved. We actually held six outdoor concerts. Four of them were inside due to weather. We actually have changed off the driveway to stay clear of the driveway. We've marked it with fire hose, and we're making sure, we're monitoring it. We've added more signs up, and we're keeping clear of Mr. O'Donnell's property as best we can. And the goal here is to keep our members outside, away from, you know, potential of getting COVID, and use our outside facility.
So you guys have worked it out with the neighbor?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
B is approve application for new Class 1 motor vehicle dealer license, Caps &amp; Yachts, 56 Granton Avenue, Falmouth. Administrative orders, approve grant of license to John Bowen to install a parking space in front of the home at 102 Grand Ave.
I'm trying to answer a question.
Do you have a question?
I do.
Go ahead. We can hold it.
Who's representing the applicant? Anybody?
We'll hold.
Okay, please.
We'll hold A.
Thank you.
B?
We're going to withhold it for a minute.
We're going to come back. We're going to hold it. Approve request from the Falmouth Cultural Council for a waiver of the special events permits fees for Falmouth Market at Marina Park on Thursdays from 6:30 22 to 9:122. C, approve request for sign variance from the East Falmouth Village Association for temporary off-premise signs for the East Falmouth Village Association Annual Meeting. D, vote to approve request for exemption under the Conflict of Interest Law, Mass. General Law C268A, Section 19B1, disclosure by non-elected municipal employee of financial interest and determination by appointing authority acting town manager Peter Johnson Staub relative to the TAM compensation study. E, signed bond anticipation note for the T-Ticket School roof. F, approve letter of support for the Resilient Woods Hole on the request of the Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution. And G, approve request for Marine Environmental Services to apply to the Office of Coastal Zone Management, CZM, for grant funding from the FY23 Coastal Resilience Grant Program.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve all those items under the consent agenda, not held.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's go back to A. Approve grant of license to John Bowen to install a parking space in front of the home at 102 Grand Ave. Mr. Bowen?
Aye.
Questions from the board? Who held this one?
I did.
Mr. Zlinski?
Mr. Bowen, will this change the lot coverage with respect to parking, paving on your lot in Heights, if you, the construction of this? Well, the parking space is limited in Falmouth Heights, therefore, it's on my property, so it's- It changes lot coverage calculations, though, when you create parking. Okay. Have you discussed that with the zoning department at all to see if it changes and forces you into a nonconformity? Letters went to zoning, letters went to conservation, letters went to all the board members. You don't have, I don't know if you have any on hand or not.
Just a comment. I think that the concern is that it's actually so close that it's in the roadway rather than actually on his property. That's why we're giving him the license. So I don't think it increases his lot coverage because it's-
I'm not saying increases. I'm saying decreases his lot coverage. By increasing, if any part of a new structure goes on to his existing lot coverage, it decreases the lot coverage by parking, paving, and structures. What we don't want, what I was curious about is, are we forcing this issue into a nonconformity that may not exist right now by doing this? I just want to know what the answer was, one way or the other, before signing off. I think everything, most everything in Falmouth Heights is nonconforming because of all the lots that are in there now. So I'm trying to do everything in the safest manner possible. You have a question, too?
Another question?
No, I-
Public question, next.
Okay, but I'll go with Mr. Patterson first, and then we'll take another question.
No, I think our assistant, our acting town manager explained this fairly well. This actually gives us some control over how long, you know, it will be permitted to actually park a car in this space. So if we want to do something differently in the future, we can revoke that license. Gives us some flexibility we wouldn't have otherwise. By the way, I might suspect that there are plenty of people that are parking in the town roadway already without any permission. I think that was mentioned by our acting town manager.
People that have been asked to remove structure in Falmouth Heights and have defied the requests of the town.
Take a question. Yes, Mr. Fineran. I couldn't see you back there, Mark. Sorry.
Mark Fineran, 98 Grand Ave. I live close to this, and I just have some questions on this, and so do some of the neighbors. Mr. Bowen's doing a considerable amount of work to his house, and he has removed all the front yard, right down to the level of the road, and was stopped. My understanding was that a historic bound was removed. But it's in the process of covering the whole lawn all the way around the house with patio stones, which, I don't know the ruling on that, but he's asking for one space, and the reality is, as the neighbor who came down, you know, down for the summer now, asked me the other day, "Mark, what's going on over there? Is that a lawn or is it a parking lot?" You know, I understand the need for parking, but the reality is, on this, there's no demarcation. And as I say, the entire lawn is covered with patio stone, so you could park 12 cars here, probably, which I don't know the legality of. But I did call Highway, and they were completely unaware of it. And so he went down and checked with engineering, and they said they were, in fact, granting him a parking space. But as I said, it's more than, it could be as many as a dozen parking spaces. And as Jimmy Grady said at Highway, that he's a little uneasy about this because it can open up a can of worms. His example was, what if somebody across the street applied for the same type of license? Then he envisions problems in the roadway. It is so small, but there is no demarcation for this one parking space that he's asking for. It, in fact, covers the front, the side, and the back of the house, which, as I said, you could probably park 12 cars there if you tried. So it's questions that are kind of unanswered, if you ask me. And like I said, Highway was never informed. I did email Officer Porter this afternoon, because he's the representative to the Traffic Committee, but as I said, Highway said they were uncomfortable with this, and they were never notified. So that's, you know, where it stands. I mean, you're proving one, but it could be a dozen.
Thank you.
Highway was notified. As I understand it, Falmouth Highway Department was notified. They told me to. They brought up concerns, and I've always conformed to exactly what they wanted to do. Like I said, well, and I should point out, there's bad blood between Mark Fineran and myself, and I think you have bigger-
Look, I'd like us to not make personal, Mr. Bowen, I'm going to speak for a minute, please.
I just told you that there was bad blood between us.
Okay, and we don't need to hear personal comments. He has a right to an opinion. He's voiced it. Questions from the board?
Can I just correct that?
Mark, have a seat. Mark, have a seat, please. Have a seat. Questions from the board?
I guess I'll ask a question then. What's the other patio? Is that just a patio area, or?
There's a front driveway area. The other area is on a private road, and that's not, that didn't come up to of any concern in the town highway department. And there is a demarcation. It's for the area that I'm trying to get approved here.
Okay, thank you.
Any recommendations from the acting town manager?
So I apologize because I know that I, you know, I like to give the board a recommendation when there's a clear recommendation. I will say there was some trepidation on the part of the Department of Public Works. It was brought forward. It was not rejected, but there, you know, it's an accommodation to the homeowner, and it's just not clean, simple, slam dunk one way or the other. You know, what Mr. Bowen is seeking to do is clearly better than what some other homeowners in the area have done in terms of trying to get approval and doing it the right way. You know, is this something that homeowners are entitled to? No. The lots are small. You know, I don't know how important it might be to the select board, the total number of existing parking spaces. My understanding, and Mr. Bowen can correct me, you currently have two parking spaces, and this would be a third. Is that accurate?
There's a driveway that we were able to park two cars in when we lived there as a family. Okay, so there's three vehicles now, myself, my wife, and my daughter. And so now we need three parking spaces. There's two structures on the property, so that would cover for a guest also. I'm trying to do the right thing here. You know, I'm in front of you people. I've done what everything was requested of me. This parking space came up as an issue, and it is level with the ground, just like you want. You don't want anything raised up off the ground. I did that. You have a one-foot asphalt berm off the, before the structure begins. It's just a continuance. You can drive on, you can drive off. It's just a, it's just a, I have pictures throughout the neighborhood of all these structures that are here. I don't know if they're legal or not, but I can go on and on and on. I have a list, you know, as far as-
I have a question. I have a question from the board.
My own. Mr. Bowen, this is for purely private use. There's no, there's no for higher- No commercial. -parking or anything. No commercial? No commercial or anything like that. And it could be written that way? There's no commercial. It's a residential neighborhood. I can't have a business there anyways. I'm talking about paved parking. Paved park in the Heights. Paved park. Oh, no, no, no. No, this is strictly for, my family and I are moving back now. We have three vehicles.
Just a comment, Madam Chair, that it seems like our jurisdiction is just whether or not to license the encroachment on the roadway.
Yes.
So I would say, based on that, I would move approval.
I'll second.
You've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, business. Petition related to surplus police department firearms. We have 10 minutes.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Warner. I'm a resident of Precinct 2 here in Falmouth. I'm not alone. You're not alone, and we as a town are not alone. Every time there's a mass shooting, no matter where, a grocery store, a house of worship, an elementary or high school, wherever, we have the same response. Oh, no. Not again. Not again. Not another. When will it stop? Next, we hear a litany of details about those who have been killed, those who've been injured, those who've sought to save others, those who were killed in the act of saving. Teachers, students, shoppers, grocery clerks, retired and active law enforcement officers, doctors, bystanders, daughters, sons, mothers, fathers, grandparents, aunts, uncles, those who are single or married, those who are widowed, people who look like us, and people who appear to look different, but they are not. Their bodies are our bodies. Their minds are our minds. Their hearts, their blood is our hearts. It is our blood. We hear about the person who was able to get his or her hands on a lethal weapon, an assault rifle, to inflict harm or death, and what is known and unknown about that person. I am here, we are here, to present to you a petition with more than 300 names or members of Falmouth across town, who are two, daughters and sons, mothers and fathers, grandparents, aunts and uncles. Some of us are single, others married, some- Some of us are single, others married, some are widowed. We live next door and we live across town, but together we're here to request that this Board of Selectmen please reconsider your recent decision that permitted semi-automatic long guns, commonly called assault rifles, to be turned over to a gun dealer. We are strongly requesting that these and future assault rifles be dismantled and be destroyed. Beginning on the evening of May 25th, at yet another community-wide vigil to honor families this time, who had been killed only days earlier, in Buffalo, New York, in Laguna Woods, California, and of course, in a school in Uvalde, Texas. Again, we have over 300 signatures on these petitions. I and others who are here are ready and willing to do whatever is necessary to assist you and the Falmouth Police Department, and if necessary, whatever legal means we can, to work together to make this request a reality. We know and we appreciate that such a change in your previous decision would be an act of courage. We know that. However, these times demand nothing less than acts of courage by people like you and me, people across this town and the Commonwealth and the country. So we do our part to stem the tide of unnecessary death. And without being, without being too pointed about it, I can't help but say, when kids go to school, and you know this, because some of you are teachers, we promise that they'll be in a safe setting. That's a promise. We're binding ourselves to that promise. And when we allow assault rifles to get into the hands of those who should never have them, when we allow that, and we fail to have assault rifles that rightfully were part of the town's property, and then turned in, they have to come off the market. We have promised our children, we've promised people who go to the hospital, we've promised people who go to a concert, we've promised people who go to a dance, we've promised all of them that they will be safe. Thank you.
Comments, questions from the board? Can I just have a minute, Mr. Doobie? Comments or questions from the board?
Well, I guess, Madam Chair, I'll comment that I opened the door to this conversation. When I first received the first email from Mr. Doobie, my first response was that I'm not inclined to entertain your request, because I don't feel like we should be telling the police how to do business. But after more consideration, I said, okay, let's take it up, we'll talk about it. And we did. And we determined that we should need a policy. And our policy was crafted specifically to allow two things, destruction of weapons or the opportunity for resale to our own police, local police department. And so I think the board took up this question, decided that we didn't want to just send guns back into society randomly, without accountability, and we were careful in our deliberations. And now we have a policy that determines that the guns will be sold only back to law enforcement officials locally. And I think that's a big improvement over what we started with, so.
Thank you.
I know you don't agree. That's my comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Doobie? I'm going to ask that you afford the board the same respect that we afforded you when you speak.
My name is Richard Doobie, Precinct Six. At the previous Board of Selectmen meeting, Town Council advised the board, and this is a quote from Town Council, "This Select Board in this town has an obligation to do its best to maintain the health and safety of the residents of this town. You were provided with a choice. The choice to do what's best to maintain the health and safety of the town was either destroy the rifles or turn them over to Powderhorn, who would resell them to the police department, the members of the police department. In selling them to members of the police department, if you're thinking that these weapons will never appear on the public market, you are gravely mistaken. There is nothing to prevent a police officer from selling those rifles. True, they cannot sell them to any residents in Massachusetts, but they can go to Powderhorn tomorrow, because Powderhorn has a federal firearms license, they can work a deal to sell it to somebody in New Hampshire, the gun will go from Powderhorn to a federal firearms license dealer in New Hampshire, and a private party can pick up the AR-15s. Any state that the AR-15 is legal in, these guns can be sold to, to a private party. So if you're thinking that these guns are going to stay with these police officers for the rest of their lives, you're sadly mistaken. And unfortunately, what I have found is that we have very good people, you five, who made a bad mistake. And we've all, we've all been there. And I understand from Town Council that this is a binding contract, there's no two ways about that. But I received emails from members of this board that were just filled with misinformation, absolutely filled with misinformation, about this particular transaction, such as that it would be illegal for these officers to sell these weapons. It wouldn't be illegal for these officers to sell these weapons. Such as, a statement that it would be unlikely that these weapons would ever be used to shoot somebody. If these residents in Falmouth, and you all, are happy with the term unlikely, as far as AR-15s are concerned, then I think we have a much larger problem in Falmouth and justice discussion is taking place. I would ask Town Council, I know that we have a binding agreement with Powderhorn, is there any possibility that we can make Powderhorn whole? I was not a member of Town Meeting when the $86,000 was allocated for the purchase. I am a member of Town Meeting now. And certainly in November, if we had to approve additional funds to make Powderhorn whole so that we can get these rifles and destroy them, I would be the biggest advocate at Town Meeting for that. I think you have to make a decision, not simply, and Mr. Brown stated it perfectly, and I have full confidence, he's the only member of this board that I know personally, he's a good man. But once again, turning them over to police officers sounds like a solution for everything. We never have to worry about these AR-15s again. I don't know whether anybody but Mr. Zalinski, and I know you have weapons experience, whether anybody has ever fired an AR-15 that's on this board. I certainly don't think anybody on this board has ever seen a wound that an AR-15 can cause. You're nodding your head, so I take it you have. These are not weapons that we want out there in public, they're simply not. We would ask that you consult with Town Council, perhaps finding a way to make Powderhorn whole, get these weapons back so we can destroy them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Well, I guess I would like to say that, you know, I agree with your motives entirely. But this is not a simplistic problem. And it's not a Massachusetts problem, and it's certainly not a Falmouth problem that can be solved here. Understand the need for us to take action locally, but it is not as though we're going to solve the problem. We're not. This is much too complex, we have so many other states that operate very differently, we have political interests that obviously are supporting the free exchange of, I'm against it all myself, but honestly, what you're asking us to do, which is to basically come close to breaking Massachusetts regulations, you know, for the way we conduct our business, in my mind, the probability, and I'm sorry, but there are no absolutes about what's going to happen and what's not going to happen, but the probability of these guns actually being used to kill anybody is pretty small. And that's where I come from. Do I think that we should do civil disobedience? I've done it myself personally, I've been part of the civil rights movements on numerous occasions, so I understand that that is a one avenue to go down. But acting as a Select Board member, essentially also swearing to uphold the laws and regulations of the state of Massachusetts, I can't see this as such a critical decision that I'm willing to essentially do something that you think is going to kill somebody. I don't agree with you. Driving down the road has all of the risks that come along with, probably far more risk, quite honestly, to us personally, than the likelihood of somebody shooting us with an AR-15. And that's where I am, I don't look at the world as a simplistic thing, I look at probabilities. And that's where I'm coming from. So I think it's my duty, as a Select Board member of the state of Massachusetts, to follow the regulations, and therefore I follow the advice of our Town Council, and I think that's why I, you know, basically supported the Select Board's move, motion, to basically take this, use this policy. And then from henceforth, I think we actually do have an opportunity to potentially destroy those weapons, instead of turning them over as part of a trade-in. Unfortunately, we're too far down the road.
You can come up first, please. I saw your hand first.
Greg Parkinson, 12 volts over lane, Precinct Five. In addition to being the school physician for the town of Falmouth, I'm also the co-chair of Injury Prevention for the Massachusetts Chapter of the American...
That doesn't amplify in here, that's for the TV pickup.
Gotcha, sorry. The, in addition to being a school physician for the town of Falmouth and co-chair of Injury Prevention for the Massachusetts Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, also, of course, in practice in town. And, you know, the first thing I want to say in light of what's happened in our own community in the last couple of weeks is to, I want to thank the police for the job that they did in protecting our children at North Falmouth, when we had a gun incident two weeks ago. I want to thank them for the job, along with the job that the teachers did, of helping the children through that time. And I want to thank them, as well as the administration, for looking back at our policies to see whether or not there are more things that can be done in the current climate to keep our children safe. I think that's important, I think they did an excellent job with that. Having said that, I think it's abominable that in the light of the events of the last two weeks, that anybody publicly could say that the likelihood of getting killed by an automatic rifle is unlikely. I, you know, how many incidents have we seen with fatalities in the last 72 hours? Never mind last week or two weeks ago. And I really hope you will rethink that statement. It's, speaking as a scientist, as a physician, there is an absolutely clear relationship between gun ownership and gun deaths, whether it's homicide or suicide, whether it's intentional or unintentional. That is, that is a proven scientific fact. We cannot single-handedly solve the problem of the entire country ourselves, but the reason that the United States has so much more of a problem than every other Western country, the reason that a child in the United States is 36 times more likely to die of gun violence than a child in Australia or Great Britain, is because we have so many guns. These countries, other countries do not lack for social issues or medically ill, mentally ill people, what they don't have is the guns. And while we cannot single-handedly do this, you know, think globally, act locally, and what power we have to intercede is in this current transaction that we're talking about. And it would be of huge symbolic value and of real practical value to reverse this decision.
Doctor, while you've described that so eloquently and it really hit home with everybody, I haven't heard one person talk about the mental health issue that goes along with this problem. If we expressed or drove down on that problem as equally as we did about guns, we'd be far better off. Now, I, of course, everyone knows, Mr. Doobie, I've spent my life protecting people of this country, whether in the military and now in my business. They're a necessary instrument to help us keep bad people away. And I made a comment about keeping our officers trained. They are the only people that are between us and the people that would choose to do us harm, no matter what weapon they had their hands on. I personally applaud people that will take the extra time to train. The guy that went into that Uvalde school had to borrow a gun from another officer to go in and stop that. So while we demonstra, we demonstриtized these firearms that have kept us safe in this town for 20 years with the same people that want to purchase them, to continue to keep us safe and to continue to stay strong and trained, you'll never change my mind, as long as there's bad people, there has to be well-trained, good people, as long as weapons exist. And that's my opinion on this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. I'm going to let a couple more speakers, we've spent a lot of time on this issue, and we do have other business that we need to get to as well. Barbara, and then Reverend, I'll let you come up, we'll do a couple more speakers, but we do need to move on.
Barbara Schneider, Precinct Captain for Precinct Four. I would just like to go back to what I said weeks ago regarding our intention at Town Meeting when we voted money for those new guns. There was absolutely the discussion and the intent that we sent all the money that was needed to buy those guns without any trade-in, without any deal made other than buying them outright. And our message was very clear at Town Meeting, we were hoping that there would be a way to find that those guns would be destroyed and not on the street again. In today's world, we don't want to have any tiniest percentage of a risk that one of those guns is someday going to be traced back to having come from this town. And that's the truth. We didn't think that we would start the season with a drowning, and we started the season with a drowning. Please reconsider this, find a way that we can go back, they're not going to lose money, don't take the money, we gave the police plenty of money to pay for these guns. Do the right thing, do what Town Meeting voted for you to do, and make this happen correctly. Let's not take that tiny risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable members of the select board. Will Meban, resident of 103 Falmouth, 103 Main Street here in Falmouth. Mr. Patterson, you're right, there are few guarantees in life. In fact, we all are familiar with the saying, the only guarantees in life are death and taxes. But occasionally there comes an opportunity where there can be a guarantee, and this is one such opportunity. We can guarantee that the weapons we are talking about will never be used in a shooting of any kind if they are destroyed. That's a guarantee. And that is an opportunity you have as our leaders in this community. The homes of our Falmouth Police Officers are not immune from break-in, nor are they immune from suicide or violent domestic disputes, unfortunately. And there's no way to guarantee that an officer that might receive one of these weapons won't, through other means, sell it to someone else in the community, as we've heard. So there's no guarantee, if they come back to a Falmouth Police Officer, that they won't be back in the community again. You, though, can guarantee that these weapons, these weapons will never be used for destruction or death. And I plead with you, define the means. If necessary, breach the contract. Breach the contract and have the town take the responsibility, the citizens of this town, take the responsibility for finding a way to make anyone that needs to be made whole. And there is, there are opportunities to turn weapons into weapons that are designed for destruction and death. There's a way to use them for life. There are organizations that turn guns into gardening tools. They turn guns into something that brings life. What a message that would send to this community, that this board said no to destruction, no to death, and yes to life. And we made those gardening tools available to the community, to the members of this community. I thank you for your indulgence and the opportunity to speak with you.
Go ahead. Comments from the board, and then we're going to wrap this up. Go ahead.
Mr. Zelinski brought up the concern that we haven't talked about mental health. But I just want to say, there's a lot of energy in this room around this issue, and for good reason. And I support that energy. I hope that you all keep that same energy when we start talking about ways to actually deal with these systems of oppression, with dismantling white supremacy and the reasons for people going and killing other people. So I hope that you all, whatever happens today, whatever happens in the future, just keep that same energy when we start talking about what we can do as a community and what we can do as a nation to really stop this from happening.
All right. Thank you very much for coming tonight. We will take this under advisement, and we are going to move on now to other business. Thank you. I don't do that often. Folks, I'm going to ask you to move out quickly and quietly so we can continue with business. Okay, we have a report from the golf advisory committee. All right, I'm going to put the board into a five-minute recess. Call the back, call the board back into order, please. And I'd like to start this session with a report from the golf advisory committee. Hello, Mr. Murphy.
Good evening. How are you all?
I'm well. You have 10 minutes.
I didn't know it was so popular golf. Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. A bulk of the presentation will be an electronic presentation from the Tru and Indigo Sports people. I think they downloaded it. I believe you got the minutes of the meeting? You got a little cheat sheet about who we are, what we're doing. You know, the property represents one of the largest open space acquisitions in the town of Falmouth. We're very proud of that. It represents a recreational opportunity to the citizens, young and old. Its financial multiplying factor for the golf course is huge, and restaurants, retail, gas station bars. It's doing quite well, I have a committee, so. I just want to mention that we get a lot of support from the staff, from Peter and from Diane in the office and Joe Lenick from the rec. I'm trying to make this quick, but it's a great, it's a great support system that we have at the town of Falmouth, and it's a great course for the town, and we do very well, and we thank this board for its work. Golf is a game of integrity and etiquette. It's also a game of sportsmanship. It's a daily life lesson on risk and reward and resulting consequences. It's about respecting your competitors and respecting the course. Taking that integrity, gamenesship, and etiquette in every aspect of life is really important, especially in these current times. So thank you very much for allowing us to participate in that. And one of the other committee members, Dick Bowles, is here also. And some of the other members were going to come, but I think you got a little, little busy. So if you don't mind, I'm going to turn it over to the Tru and Golf folks, and they're just going to make a quick electronic presentation. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you.
I promise we'll be brief. If there's a way to get-
Turn some lights down.
You pull the drawer up, it's a PC, and you can just step down.
I believe you all have the, uh, the slides or the printout of it. Got it. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, Kerry, for the introduction. I'm Ryan Phelps, Vice President of Operations for Indigo Sports. Matt Burgess is the General Manager of Falmouth Country Club, and Steve Howard is our Director of Marketing. I live in Connecticut, so not too far. Used to be the GM here, actually, a long time ago. So what we want to get into is a very brief presentation on Falmouth and golf and just the state of the industry in general. So a lot has happened since COVID, including my suit that doesn't even come close to buttoning, so how does it? But golf has been on a tear. It was, it was one of the few industries that really, I don't think anybody foresaw it, but it was outdoors, it's naturally distanced, and we could be open in a safe way to accommodate people that just wanted to get out of the house. So really, since, since May of 2020-ish, just nationwide golf has been on a tear. So a couple of just quick highlights. The highest number of rounds ever played, ever, the Tiger Woods era, any of it, was last year. The equipment and ball sales is, is seeing historic levels, which is really how you measure kind of current and future uptake. So there's really no signs of it slowing down. And just a brief, you can see the picture for yourself, but participation is at the highest participation golf has ever been. So obviously, we came into 2020, you know, working our way through and kind of just doing, doing a fine job, but we're just, I don't think anybody in the industry was prepared for what COVID was going to do to that, to that, to that particular space. Briefly about the acquisition, Billy Casper Golf made an agreement with the town all the way back in 2005. Since then, we changed our name to Indigo Golf Partners about five years ago, just through a rebranding effort. And then Tru actually purchased us. We were privately held. Tru purchased us in December of 2020, so after that first year of COVID. It's a big company. It's still got local individuals like, like us, but their world headquarters is in Scottsdale, Arizona. They have 630 golf courses in over 30 countries. The only thing that means for you is we just have a few more resources that we can lean on, programs and abilities to, to keep our expenses in check. So where the rubber really hits the road is this slide. And this, this shows the success for the last seven, eight years of the golf course. In the next slide, I'll actually go back to '05. But as you can see, we were kind of hovering around 1.4, 1.5 million in revenue, which is important for the town to get, to get their share. So this is what was paid in rent to the town for, for our lease. So it had been around $400,000 for a long time. There's a couple of, of factors in the rent, and essentially we pay a base fee, and then as the golf course does better, we both start splitting the better. And I don't think anybody anticipated-
Excuse me, Ryan. Sorry. The, it's really important for the broadcast at home to be near the mic.
I'm sorry. Got it. Okay, so I don't think anybody anticipated the better was going to get all the way to 2 million, but that's exactly what happened in 2020. That was actually missing most of March and April. And then, of course, you see 2021, and we've, now that we've really closed the books on May, we're, we're actually going to probably beat that. So the town rent has gone from a static, call it 400-ish for the better part of a decade to now it's going to exceed $800,000, which really starts to become extremely meaningful into what the long-term means of the golf course will be. Plus, you know, it's town fund, so that can be spent. I'm sure you all can just, can decide how that money gets, gets spent. In graph form, this just illustrates, we're going back to 2006. The revenue stream of the golf course, you can see, just was steady Eddie, right around 1.4, 1.5 million. Golf was in decline. I don't think that's a secret. You know, golf was a sport that was, that was, had its own struggles and, and, you know, rising costs and things, and just, just competing, uh, competing things for people's time, really, is what, is what golf struggled with. But now, since, since 2020, we're just kind of in a, in a whole different zone here. And so I think that slide does a, does a really nice job of just explaining that. We're, we're about halfway through, so I'm going to let Matt take a couple of slides. Okay, yeah, so these are the capital improvements that are mostly, you know, through the, the maintenance side of the golf course. Every year, we have about $50,000 that we need to spend and try and, with our superintendent, target the specific parts of the golf course that needs the most upgrade. I mean, the equipment goes through, obviously, a lot of work. They have a useful life and needs to be replaced. So you can see it, these are all approved at town meeting. So I won't, it's in your packet, so we don't have to go. Or this one, this one's a fun one to talk about because this is community involvement and all the different things we do at the club for residents. Today, we had our first, coincidentally that I'm here, our first event at the club for our members, and we had the biggest turnout we've ever had in Falmouth Country Club history. So things keep on growing, and we love to see it. We have 12 leagues at Falmouth Country Club, two more this year than we even had last year, including five ladies leagues and the Falmouth newcomers, a men's league and a ladies league for the Falmouth newcomers. Kids play free with a paid adult on the Talon Course. Nothing like a family of, you know, three or four coming to the Cape in the summer, and everything's so expensive these days, but kids play for free as long as they're with their parents. The Falmouth Rec Junior Summer Program, that Joe helps us run, both the boys' and girls' high school golf teams. We have a Morse Pond After School Golf Program, a Lawrence School After School Program. We run a Cape Cod Junior Golf Association Tour Event. We run a New England PGA Junior Tour Event, which kids come from all over New England. We have the Hurricane Junior Golf Tour Event. Again, we had that for the first time this year, which kids come from all over New England, you know, Rhode Island, Connecticut, Vermont. U.S. Kids Junior Golf Tour Event, which is a lot of kids come down from the Boston area. The PGA Junior League Traveling Team, which is a great, actually, both my sons play on the team. We have actually enough to field two teams. We have so many kids playing in it, and we travel, like this year, we play against Hyannis Port. We play against Oyster Harbors, the Ridge Club, New Seaberry. So these kids get opportunities to play really, really nice private clubs around, around the Cape Cod.
Just going to give you your two-minute warning.
Okay, perfect. And we have the, the girls, we have the sexual qualifier for the MIAA Girls this year. I'll go over this real quick. This is just mostly a screen grab from our website, but it just illustrates the deals that we do give residents of Falmouth and Mashpee to come out and play.
Good evening. This slide talks about part of, part of the job within marketing and responsibility held at the front line, at the counter, and all throughout the course is the experience. Experience is what's going to bring people to come back. So we measure that through a net promoter score, which is essentially a survey that we send to our golfers, asking the question, would you recommend this to a friend or family? It's based on a scale. I included the calculation in this slide of how net promoter score is factored. I looked at 2021 same time period. Anything above a zero is considered good. Anything above a 50 is considered excellent, and anything above a 70 is considered world-class. This scale goes negative 100 to positive 100. So I'm happy to report that Falmouth, as of April, had a net promoter score of 71%. And year-to-date, although we're really early in the season, 56%. And what that means, it's a great compliment to the financials that Ryan went over, that people are having a good experience at Falmouth, and that's important. And so Matt and his team does, his staff do a great job. You can see, also, we manage our online rating. That's based on the number of stars. So year-to-date, they're at, Falmouth's at 4.1. Out of 12 reviews, we're still really early in the season, but it's a tremendous start to this year's season. For your reading pleasure, I just took a screen grab of some of the comments that came in. We, again, part of my responsibility is to scrape websites for this. I know that Matt is very active in responding, so that we're engaging with the community and people that are leaving reviews. Briefly talking about the app, which is another marketing channel for the course. Last year, close to $68,000 in revenue was attributed to the app, which is a great channel, over 1,200 downloads for the year. And just so far, early in the season this year, close to $4,500 in revenue and 259 downloads. So that's, those are important metrics to make sure that we're keeping people engaged. This is the social media dashboard. Obviously, we want to make sure that we're tracking number of followers because we use that to communicate. And then briefly, I think one of the things we want to talk about was being able to enhance the annual pass holder experience, where now the pass holders can actually log in and book their tee time 10 days in advance, which is different than the public. So we've enhanced the experience for those who actually, you know, show their loyalty to the club. So we've given back in the way that they can make the process of booking their tee time better. How'd I do?
You're over.
I'm over.
I'll give you it this time. Any questions from the board?
No, but I could comment if I could. I just witnessed that ever since the town has bought that golf course, we continue to invest in repair and fix, whether it's the clubhouse, the irrigation system. You know, it's always, every year, there's been an investment, and you guys seem to be always looking to improve as well. So it's really getting nice over there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for setting your liaison with Angela, a scratch golfer. It was very nice of you to put us on there. Thank you. You're, you're our new liaison, so.
I, I am. I've golfed once, and it was not nice.
I want to invite everybody, the board and people, the citizens, to come out and visit the course, you know? Come out and walk around, and maybe they get a little tour. It's, it's an absolute wonderful facility, and it's a crown jewel, I think, of this town. an absolute wonderful facility, and it's a crown jewel, I think, of this town, this recreational facility.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all your support.
Thanks for your work.
Well done. Okay, Historical Commission. Mr. Hadad? You have 15 minutes. They all left.
Yes, I was really excited when I came in here.
They were all here for the Historical Commission report.
And I am going to keep you to the 15 minutes.
You have the benefit of the listening audience. Tick, 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 tick.
All right, so this is a quick presentation of the Falmouth Historical Commission for to talk about our activity last year, what we do, and we have some new members on the board, so I put a little bit about what we do and how we do it. So first, I'd just introduce you to our board. I'm the chairman, I've been the, I've been the chairman for a few years now. Christian Valley is our vice chairman, Annie Dean, Johanna Reed, Tamsin George, and Lee Drescher, and tonight, you just approved Mason Wilcox as our other alternate. Just to give you a feel about the variety of the expertise that we have in our board, I think we're very lucky. Certainly, Christian Valley has building expertise, Annie Dean has marketing expertise, Johanna Reed is an architect, she works in town, Tamsin George, of course, her association with the Historical Society for many years, and Lee Drescher was at one time part of the Historical Commission. So we have a great, a great board of knowledge here that really works well for us in different aspects, in different conditions. And so certainly, the planning board provides a lot of support for us, all of our support, and they've done a terrific job. I have to say, you know, I know Jed has just been made the town planner, but he's been a spectacular support for us, he's really done a terrific job, and I think the town was very lucky to get him too, and he does a great job for us. And Melinda continues to do a great job for us as well, so I want to certainly identify the contribution that they make to the board. So the Historical Commission has two roles. If you, just quickly, we go back to 2015, when the Select Board made a decision to combine the Historical Commission and the Historic District Commission together into one board, because there was a lot of confusion as to what was going on. So we have two roles. We certainly have the regulatory role that the Historic Districts Commission had, and in that, we issue the Certificates of Appropriateness for exterior changes to homes within the Historic Districts. We have seven Historic Districts in town, hopefully, you're all familiar with those seven districts. We meet monthly on the first day, first Tuesday of the month. We maintain design guidelines that are posted online, so everybody knows what our expectations are, there's complete transparency into how we regulate some of the decisions that we make, there's no secrets, it's not arbitrary. And we regularly review new materials, we continue to update, as new materials come on the market, so that we're updating as well to, so the expectations of homeowners, because we want to be sensitive to their needs as well. From an advisory point of view, I mean, that's all over the place. We advise on the preservation of Falmouth's historic assets. And in case you don't already know it, Falmouth is a treasure trove of historic assets. We have a ton of things in this town that unfortunately are not as well-known as they should be, but we have a lot of them. In 2015, we did a historic inventory, resource inventory of the homes in Falmouth, and we came up with 1,500 homes that were older than 1950. That's a lot of historic assets in town. They're not all in Historic Districts, but still a lot of historic assets that the town should be very proud of. So this is one of our, this is just to give you a glimpse at our regulatory activity. It seems low for the amount of houses, we probably have about 1,300, no, maybe about 1,000 houses within the Historic Districts. Historic houses don't change, people don't change their homes, you know, so there's very little that goes on there for the amount of houses that we do. But, you know, we've had a bad reputation in the past that the Historic Commission or the Historic Districts is so hard to work with, your materials, it's too expensive, we can't work with those people. Almost 60 to 80% of our applications are approved administratively. So if you come in and you just have a roof repair, you're going to put a new roof on, you're putting some new windows with like materials, a new door, new sidings, those are approved within two to three days, you get your approval. So we're very accommodating, we're very sensitive to the homeowners, we want to help them, we work with them. I can't remember the last time we actually turned down an application, because we, they know our expectations, because we post our guidelines, and we want to make people feel comfortable with dealing with our board. So I think we do a good job in making the homeowners that are within the Historic Districts feel that they get what they really want to have done. So the one thing that you may not also know that we do is, you know, the demolition delay bylaw. The demolition delay bylaw states that no house can be demolished within Falmouth that's listed on the list of significant buildings. So we maintain this list of significant buildings, there's about 700 houses on that list. So these are houses that are not in a Historic District, that have been identified because of their age or their architectural distinctiveness as being special to the town. So we put them on this list, and what the demolition delay bylaw says is, if you want to demolish a house that's on that list, you have to wait 12 months, it's automatic. So you go to the building department, you ask for a certificate to demolish a building, if it's on the list, the building department automatically says you can't, you have to wait 12 months. Now, what they can do is they can come to the Historical Commission and ask for a waiver of that 12-month delay. So we hear those hearings as well, and those hearings, you know, people come before us, there's, the house is falling apart, it was really a cottage, it's not been maintained, there's a lot of reasons, and they can petition to us, and we can waive the 12-month delay. So that's something else that we do, that I don't think people realize comes before our boards, and we have, and that comes through our hearings as well. So some of the advisory activity that we do, just to tell you some of the things we do, Annie Dean is our Historical Commission representative on the CPC. There are very busy groups, they meet all year round, they meet all applications, so Annie is our representative on that board. Christian Valley is our Historic Commission representative on the Edward Marx Advisory Building Committee. I'm also on that committee, but he is our official representative on the restoration of that building and the types of things that we're doing to get mainly the exterior restored on that building. We've just completed Phase Four of our Historic Resource Inventory. So like I said, we had 1,500 historic buildings identified when we did our full inventory, and what we did after that is that we update our list of significant buildings, and what we do is that we have is a Form B. A Form B is a provenance of the houses that we feel are the most important. And what that does is it defines or describes the architectural features, why that house is important, who lived in it, what is the style, when was it built, that kind of thing. So if you were a homeowner and you wanted to see the history of your historic home, you could go to that Form B and read all about it. And then we ultimately post those on the State Historic Inventory Register, that's where we put those inventories. So we had, when we did our inventory, we identified, we needed 400 new Form Bs that were either missing, or they were incomplete, or they just needed updating, and we just completed that last phase this year, just in March, actually. And I know you've heard a lot about the water troughs in town. When that project started, the leader of that group came to us and identified that these troughs, we did some investigation, and we did a Form C. What a Form C is, is a form that identifies structures, and a structure can be, it could be a wall, fencing, it could be water troughs, it could be a flagpole, it could be a windmill, it could be anything like that, that's not a home. And we did a Form C on the three, we found out that there's three water troughs in town, not just the two that are on Gifford Street, but we found a third one. So we identified the third historic water trough in town. And that goes on the state register right now.
I think we're going to let him finish his presentation, then we can do questions.
We successfully put in motion the plant preservation of the old burying grounds. I mean, as you recall, because we've come before you several times, that the Historical Commission started that process, we put the application into the CPC, and at the time, it was decided that the town would take that over. We transferred the application right before the vote came, before town meeting, we transferred it to the DPW. DPW got the application approved, and that process is in the works now. They've just put out the RFP for a vendor, they have a vendor identified. I actually just met this morning with Peter McConity and his crew, we met at the burial ground, we walked the grounds, we talked about what the status of that is, and we're going to get that, this is for the conditions assessment report, to get that started, and then ultimately, hopefully, start the restoration work in the burial ground. But that project took a year to get that off the ground and get to the point of actually getting an application to get funds from the CPC. The latest thing that we're doing, and this is a big deal, this is probably the first time you're hearing about it, is the Historical Commission has identified the Crown Circle Neighborhood as a candidate for a Historic District. Now, the Crown Circle is, that's the name that we call it, it's the area that's, if you go down Grand Avenue, around Grand Avenue, before you get into Falmouth Heights, there's this neighborhood off to the left. You drive right by it, you wouldn't even know it's there, but if you drive into it, it's this really very unique neighborhood, there's about 90 or so homes in there, and 80% of them are still original historic homes. It's just an amazing neighborhood that's just somehow missed time, you know, and it's just, the neighbors love it, they keep it as it was during the early 1900s, late 1800s, that's what most of those houses date back to. So we've identified that as a candidate for a Historic District. We have sent letters to all the residents, we have public meetings, outreach meetings to talk to them about it, what is a Historic District, what are the benefits of a Historic District, and ultimately, it's going to be their decision, if it's something they want. A local Historic District is the only way, the only way you could actually preserve a historic building. There's no other means. People think being on the National Register, people think other things, this is the only regulatory way that you can preserve a historic building. So we're going to offer it to them and see what they think.
Bless you.
Based on our outreach meetings, we have a meeting on the 15th, we have a Zoom meeting, and then we have a meeting planned for August, when we think all the seasonal people will be here, to make sure everybody has an opportunity to be part of it and to talk about it and hear the words, and then we'll survey them and see what they think. And if it's something that they're interested in, then we'll come to you, and we'll talk about what would be the next steps. But we didn't want to come to you for your approval yet, because we want to get their approval first, and I think you would ask for that anyway. You would expect us to want to see what the residents, how they feel about it. So that's what we're working on right now. Oh, preservation restrictions. Now, the last thing that most people don't know is, the Historical Commission holds preservation restrictions for the Falmouth CPC. So when the CPC gives money to an organization for the restoration of their building, what they're requiring is a preservation restriction. And what a preservation restriction says is that we're giving you money to restore the exterior of your building or the interior, and we want you to maintain it. And that's what, it's literally a legal document that they make the recipient of the funds take from them, and we're the holder of it. What that means as the holder is that we have to ensure that it happens. So we sent out a letter, we just sent out a letter this year, the first time we've ever done it, to all that we have, these eight properties currently have preservation restrictions that we're the holder of. We send letters reminding them of their preservation restriction and their obligation to come to us if they were to propose to make any changes. So that's another aspect that the Historical Commission does that most people don't really realize that we do. And that's it.
Did it, and we do have questions from the board. Mr. Brown?
One question is, where's the Third Fountain?
Sorry?
Where is the Third Fountain?
In Crown Circle.
Oh.
Right in the center of Crown Circle. And actually, the first time I went into the Crown Circle, how I discovered the neighborhood, I was looking for the Third Trough, because somebody said there's a Third Trough, and I heard it was in there by some rumor, I went up there looking at it, and I found that it's right, if you know the circle, up on the top of the hill, where those little gingerbread cottages, or there's like three of them right in the circle there, it's right in the center of that property, that's Falmouth Town property, the center of the circle there, I don't know if you knew that either.
Never paid attention to that.
Any other questions or comments from the board, Mr. Patterson?
Just a quick question, on the conservation restrictions, it seems like there are a number of churches that have gotten doors or something like that, I don't see them listed up there, I don't want to call them out specifically.
That's because the CPC may not have given them a preservation restriction at the time, we don't determine that, CPC does. We're just the holder of it. So we represent, literally, because these are town funds, we represent the town to make sure that the funds are used properly.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Just a comment, you probably know this, that the Falmouth Heights was the first planned residential community in the United States?
Didn't know that.
That's a bit of history, too.
Really? Wow. There was one other thing, sorry, that I didn't put in there, I want to put in there. One of the things we also did last year is, I did a lot of work with the Cape Verdean Society, and our Form Bs, like I said, our Form Bs are usually architectural only, because we don't know the history of what goes on in a house. And I was contacted by them, and they said they're doing a history, and could we somehow incorporate it? And it was a terrific opportunity for us, for the first time, to also incorporate the cultural history of these buildings. So we worked with the Cape Verdean Society, there's three buildings that came up within our inventory, and they provided us the cultural history of it, and we've combined the two of those. So that was really a nice opportunity for us to get to know that community as well.
Thank you very much. Well done. Okay, allocation of county ARPA funds.
Madam Chair, if you like, we could perhaps go out of order and take care of the public hearing, since we're running a little late?
We could do that.
I was going to bring that up just for future, I think we-
I have it on the agenda now, that we can take anything out of order at the discretion of the chair.
Okay.
So we can, we don't have to vote it or anything. We will do the public hearing.
Shall I read the posting?
Yes, please.
The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 240-14.8 Wetlands Regulations of the Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, June 6, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Square, on the application of Stephen H. Ogilvy, Jr., I hope I said that right, for permission to reconstruct and license an existing pier, ramp, and float in the waters of Siders Pond, located at 110 Siders Pond Road, Falmouth, Massachusetts. Area affected is Siders Pond, interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Office of the Select Board, per order of Select Board publication dates Friday, May 20, 2022, and Friday, May 27, 2022, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you. Good evening, board members and Chair. For the record, my name is Tom Bunker with BSS Design. We've prepared, well, not this plan, we prepared the plans for Mr. Ogilvy to permit, get a permit to erect and maintain a dock in Siders Pond. This is part of the GIS map, this is the lot here, it's at the end of Siders Pond Road, which is off of Locust Street, fronts, you know, has good shoreline, of course, this is barely tidal in here, it's in a flood zone, but not a velocity zone. Show you the, this is a view from the site, you can see where the town hall is right up on here, so this is a nice body of water, and there is a pier to the south of this, we went to the north. We have this, our plans. This has gone through conservation, been approved by the Conservation Commission. Basically, this ramp and float is always fixed at about 25 feet into the water. The depth of the water, as you can see from our soundings, ranges at the, for the float end of it, from six feet to nine feet deep. So there's certainly enough water conforms with the, all the wetland regulations for depth of water for a facility like this. And frankly, it's pretty small. It's just for kayaks and all, which doesn't really need the three feet of water. We have that stone wall that was in that picture before is up in this location. The lawn and stone wall and the stairs will come down the bank. And then just this little float will look out, as I said, which is for kayaking and, you know, casual water recreation. No power boats. I don't think there are any power boats on that pond. That's, I think it's pretty straightforward. I think I've covered things. If you have any questions?
Questions from the board?
Is there a regulation prohibiting power boats on that pond?
There is.
I don't know.
Okay.
I have a question.
Patterson?
Just for the, on page five of the Order of Conditions from the Conservation Commission. On item number six, it says order will expire on in its blank. When does that get filled in? Do we have to act and that starts at, you know, a time or going?
An order of conditions?
This isn't your document. This is our Conservation Commission.
I'm just saying in general, an order is good for three years.
Would be three years. It's just left blank, but the document's been signed and I didn't know one got filled in.
Any other questions?
Mr. Johnson?
Tom, can you explain the public access aspect of it?
Yes, yeah, I was going to mention that and I forgot to.
Thought I'd remind you.
So every, under chapter 91, every, every structure like this must allow for access along the water, along the edge of the water below the high water line. And so we do have, you can see it in plan view, a couple of steps going up one side and down the other. And see in the section view, there'll be just a few steps. I don't know how effective that will really be because the water does drop off quickly in depth. I guess it's only about a foot and a half deep or so. So it will enable people to, at least in this location, to walk around the edge of the pond.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing, seeing no additional public comment.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go back and Acting Town Manager, Mr. Johnson Staub, to speak to the allocation of the county ARPA funds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to pull up one slide. So the purpose of this agenda item is really to seek board approval to allocate the ARPA funds that have been allocated by Barnstable County to the town of Falmouth. And we want to, the board, I believe, is aware, and I know certainly Doug Brown is painfully aware, that there's been a lot of, some controversy and a lot of discussion about the allocation of ARPA funds from Barnstable County to the towns. And what the initial outcome to date is that they have allocated $10 million out of $30 million that the county has received to the respective towns. And we want to be sure to demonstrate that. The controversy was about whether those funds were going to be stewarded to some extent by the commission for regional projects, whether there would be an application process through the commission, what that might look like. Whereas the municipalities, many of the municipalities spoke with one voice saying, please just allocate the funds directly to the towns and let them spend it without further sort of process and delays. And so, as I said, at this point, $10 million has been allocated. The town's share, the town of Falmouth's share of that $10 million is $1,334,000. And I have recommendations for you on allocating that. This slide that I have in front of you just reminds you of some of the allocations you've already made with respect to ARPA funds that were received directly by the town. So we've, the board has already allocated $2.4 million of the amount, of the $3.2 million that was allocated directly to the town by the federal government. So again, the focus tonight is on the $1,334,000 allocated by the county to the town. And what I am recommending is we have two capital projects that have been bid and are over budget because of pandemic-related pricing issues. And in some case, the pricing is related to lack of competition, only one bidder. So these are both pretty significant projects. The first one is Ny Park Hard Courts. And that's significant, you know, because there are hard courts that are in disrepair and have been for some time. But also importantly, it includes pickleball courts. And we know there's a significant demand for pickleball in the community. And this will help to meet that demand and perhaps relieve some pressure on the pickleball courts at the Lawrence School, which are causing some concerns with the neighbors. The second project that I am recommending allocation is for water treatment facility upgrades. This is at the Kuna Meset and Crooked Pond wells for treatment at those two wells. That project has been bid out and is $200,000 short of available funds. And I would note, these funding requests do include contingencies. So with these allocations, we're confident we could get these projects completed. And then lastly, I am recommending that we allocate the balance of the $1,334 to wastewater treatment facility upgrades. That's the larger project to which you've already allocated, 1.7 million. And that is the project that was approved, the construction funds were approved at the last town meeting and the debt exemption was approved at the ballot in May. Happy to take any questions.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson Staub, the 1.7 that you referred to was for design, wasn't it?
That's correct. Yep.
And this is supplemental to?
This is for construction. This, yeah, this allocation, $1,024,000 would be for actual, the construction portion of that project.
To supplement the other previously approved construction?
Correct. Right, so, yeah, and actually, I'm glad you asked that question because I should really explain what that means. So the project is funded, but it's funded through a debt exclusion. So by bringing in these grant funds, instead of, it will reduce the amount that we have to borrow. And that means we, you know, we do our capital planning for our large projects that require borrowing. Our, you know, a lot of time and energy is spent on keeping the tax burden level, right? So we have a 2.5% on the operating side. But as far as on the debt side, the capital side, when we go to the voters and we ask for a debt exclusion, our message is, yes, this allows us to raise taxes that we would not otherwise be allowed to raise, but we manage the sum total of our borrowing projects such that we're at the same, we're very close to the same amount over, you know, over time. And that prevents a spike in the tax burden or a drop and then a spike.
It would go like this.
Yeah.
It would go up and down.
So a lot of time and energy is spent to keep that tax level, that tax burden level and even, and avoid those tax spikes. So what this really, this allocating these ARPA grant funds to this project that has a debt exclusion, it means sooner rather than later, that $1 million is going to be available for something else, for some other borrowing project.
I have a question about the strategy. If we've already got that bonded and approved by the voters, do we lose flexibility by just throwing another million into a $25 million project? I mean, if we keep this handy, there might be something that the Water Quality Management Committee identifies as an infrastructure need or a design need. Just to throw out an example, I had an idea the other day and I first attended the Water Quality Management Committee. And I said, what if we put a change of our wastewater planning? You know, our current plan is to march slowly east as we can afford it. But what if we threw a curve ball in there and said, let's prioritize sewer main through the East Falmouth Village and promote an opportunity to do a redevelopment zone? You know, at town meeting last time, we talked about rezoning. We had a new, Mr. Cod, they called it, zoning to go through sections of downtown. And it was determined that East Falmouth was proposed to be included, but they determined that they were going to withdraw that out of the program because somebody at town meeting said, I think that type of development should only be in sewered areas. And that's probably an appropriate course of action. And it made me think that maybe we should be prioritizing that main village area for searing so that we can afford that redevelopment and get some more affordable housing. I brought this idea to the planning board at their last meeting just to run it by them and throw it out there and said, I felt like the Water Quality Management Committee should hear it first. The planning board should hear it. And then once we get feedback from them, this board maybe might take it up. So that's why I didn't bring it up to this board first. But I just wanted to throw that out there while we're talking about ARPA funds. Not so much that this million is going to change the deal, but it might be enough to throw some design towards that idea, whether, if that turns out to be something that's feasible, people want to consider it. So I'm just thinking in terms of those, that type of flexibility, if that's something that you all think we should be considering. Because we do have the vote for the funding for the plant. This is helpful and it's a good place to use it if that's what we decide. I'm just thinking that maybe we should keep a little ARPA funding in a reserve for flexibility.
Madam Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry.
You know, I actually kind of agree with Doug. We've got a lot of challenges in areas, places, especially the coastal resiliency issues. And I think we're lacking in completing some of the planning that we really should be doing. To at least understand what the scope, the cost would be in scope and effort to actually begin to try to mitigate some of these things. So this is a, seems like an opportunity, maybe set aside a reserve that we could draw on if we wanted to do some planning to try to get a better handle on just what the risks would be and what the potential solutions might be.
I have a clarifying question.
Yes.
So the rest of the $10 million and the future $30 million, do we have an estimated timeline for those? Any idea?
Doug, I don't know. So I don't have an estimate. I don't know if Doug has any information about the county timeline for allocation.
I have a suspicion that where we're headed is that the county's going to try to keep the 30 and allocate it through the portal on individual projects. That was my fear when I first crafted my own article for the county government to consider. I wanted to just allocate the whole first 20 to the towns because I felt like the county was going to try to do this. And I had watched their recent meeting where Sumuran and another state rep, was it Julian Seer, I think, attended and really encouraged the assembly members to kind of give in and not stick to their guns about, you know, the county funding. And the assembly kind of caved and agreed that the county would have a larger share. It's not completely determined, but it seems to me that that's where it's headed, that the 30 is going to be through the portal. And this 10 is, we're going to get a million three and that's going to be it until we do special projects through their county portal. That's my suspicion. It's not confirmed yet, but.
So the reason I ask that, and now that's really good information, is because if we are expecting additional funds, and I understand the point of looking at this in the bigger planning picture and perhaps using those funds for something else, but I think if the, if there's been a discussion and an understanding in the finance office that this is a good use of these funds, if it's not, if we're expecting more funds that aren't going to take 10 years or so, something that we'll be able to draw down relatively soon, then that's the way that I would want to go. Is if this has already been deemed as appropriate, I think that if we know we're going to get more funds, that we look at the planning now for the rest of those funds and use these funds as suggested.
And I would agree. I guess my question would be, I'm making an assumption that you worked with Jennifer Mullen.
That was my assumption.
That's exactly. So I would agree with the way this has been mapped out. And I think a lot of sort of thinking and planning and number crunching has gone into this. So I would support the way you have broken down the use of the ARPA funds.
Can I ask one more question?
Can I ask one first?
Sure.
Oh, yes. Oh, sorry.
Those funds, could they be used as a safety net for the project described with the cost of materials? It's good to have it in the other pocket, wouldn't it be?
So let me make sure I'm understanding your question. So you're saying with respect to the wastewater treatment upgrade construction cost?
Correct.
Could we use the grant as sort of flex funds?
You add it to, you add it to the account, obviously.
Yeah.
And then you know things are going to continue to go up.
That's an interesting point, right. So the funds could be used to offset the total that was appropriated at town meeting? Or it could be used to supplement the total that was appropriated at town meeting? That is a mechanism. So I guess, speaking to the more general issue, I want to share, you know, part of the thinking. I think I probably mentioned it, but one of the concerns is that because the county is still somewhat in decision-making mode, the concern was if we, if we don't have a pretty good idea within, and we do not, just to be clear, we're not in a huge rush. We don't have to make this decision tonight. So there's not a, you know, not a tremendous time pressure on it. But if we don't see another project that we're really sure we're going to move on within the next couple of months, the concern is that part of what the county is doing is they're saying, okay, we've allocated a third of our funds. Let's see how quickly the municipalities actually take it up. And that will, that may determine how much money gets released of the remaining $20 million that they have. So we kind of wanted to send a signal, we're ready. We've got projects. We've got them lined up. We're ready to move. And lastly, I just wanted to speak, you know, comment again, sort of generically on the question that Doug has raised because it's a really good question. To the extent that the other projects that we, that Doug is suggesting we might want to hold these funds for, if they are potentially cash spending, then there might be a reason to hold off and not allocate it against these borrowing projects. But to the extent that they're projects we're going to borrow for anyway, it's, what, part of what I'm trying to explain is it's all the same because we're managing to one total debt limit. So by allocating it to this project, it frees it up for the next project, whatever that next borrowing project might be.
So it'd be important to keep cash on hand if we have a project that we would not need to borrow for?
Exactly.
Yes.
And there's 800, and so to that point, we have 800,000 that's not allocated from the direct town, which there's less urgency about allocating that because it's town's money and we have until December of '24 to allocate it and December of '26 to spend it.
Nancy, can I?
Yes.
I want to ask Peter a question. You sit on the Water Protection Board that allocates money for wastewater treatment projects. From the county's perspective, where should, where would they want to see the priority be in investing this kind of money? And that's, and I was kind of asking myself that question because if we go ahead and invest money in those, into those causes, then we're more likely going to be able to get more money in the future if we're going to continue to work toward those particular efforts. I'm just trying to think strategically.
Yeah.
What's going to put us in an attractive place when we want to go do something else that fits into their priorities?
I think the best way I can answer that question is that the, so Sam was referring to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Collaborative. That's that new fund that comes from the 2.2 million. That's that new fund that comes from the two point seven five percent that was added to the lodging tax, the rooms, hotel motel rooms tax. That, so that group is funding, that, you know, that fund is able to subsidize projects that qualify for the state's revolving fund program. So there, there are criteria about water quality projects, wastewater quality projects. But beyond that, that entity doesn't do priority setting. Their, you know, their role is to say, you know, how do, how are we going to, how much money do we have to spend? How much money can we allocate each year? And, you know, is, are the applications that come through eligible for funding? So the way I, I guess I would answer the question instead, it's in terms of how do we best use these ARPA funds? It's about putting together a financial package that we can afford. And the good news is that, you know, compared to ten years ago, we have much better options than we used to. It used to be, you know, if you want to do a twenty, thirty, forty million dollar wastewater project, then you just have to add it on the tax rate. Now, we have zero interest loans from the state revolving fund. We have principal subsidy from the state revolving fund. We have this new Cape and Islands fund that's subsidizing up to twenty-five percent of the cost of the project. So, you know, so, so it's about what are the next projects? How can we fit them into our debt plan with this whole combination of funding sources?
Yeah, and that's.
I have another question if I could.
Yes.
Do you think it might be more advantageous to use this money for design? So that we can go back to the county and apply through the portal to actually do construction projects?
Shovel ready.
I would love to see us take this million dollars and see if we could find an engineer to design that sewer line out to East Falmouth and go back to the county and say, we didn't have this in our sewerin plan, but it's going to help us get affordable housing built and we really need it. And then maybe we'd be a prime applicant for applying to the county for some of that other thirty million.
So do you think that the wastewater management committee will bring this toward, to us to say that they agree?
You know, I, I'm a little hesitant to say I think that they will do that because they've got their mission that they've been on for quite a while. And their obligation is to show the state that they're, we're in compliance and coming up with a plan to manage these estuaries as we go along.
Sure.
We're not mandated by the state to bring affordable housing to East Falmouth under the Water Quality Management Committee's charge. And it's a curve ball to them. And so I spoke to the committee about it. They like the thought of it, but they don't know how they can incorporate it into their planning. And it's something that I think that they would like to see us take a lead on if that's something that we're inclined to do. So it's sort of a parallel mission and it's a little outside of what they've been asked to do previously.
I guess my concern would be that, given what you just said, we're not there yet. And so, again, I would go back to supporting what is right now and being ready to say that we use this up and then go back. And I don't know if you need a vote on this, but I certainly would support the way you have divided up the ARPA funds.
I would, I would like a vote, but let me offer something that I think might make Doug more comfortable because I think it's a very intriguing idea that he's raising, but it is really complicated. And it's going to take a lot of discussion and a lot of work before we're going to know whether we can move forward with that design project. So these are, the allocation of the ARPA funds, it's, I need to sort of have you step back and, and think about what this is. This is essentially a grant that the town has received. So legally, you know, I think I could probably spend it without going to the select board. I don't think it's the right way to approach it because it's a lot of money and I, you know, the town could spend it on a, a number of things. So there, there should be a process. And I, I believe the right process is to bring it to the select board for, for discussion and for approval and allocation. The reason I'm getting into all of this is it is reversible. So for example, the one point seven million that you've already allocated to design, you know, if we, if, you know, if we wanted to rethink that, because it's, it's town money, it's not the county's ARPA allocation, we could potentially reallocate that to a, a new project. And now I'm, now I'm second guessing myself because if we didn't borrow those funds, then we don't, then we don't have any substitute for it. So that maybe is, that's probably not a good, good example. Yeah, never, never mind, sorry, that's not going to work.
I'm going to move to, I'm going to move to accept your recommendation for spending the ARPA funds as outlined in this document.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to just symbolically vote against it because I really would like to consider that, using that money for design rather than just supplementing a construction budget.
And if the other projects come under budget, the hundred thousand dollars and the two hundred thousand dollars for those two projects, those are, you know, estimates with contingency. So if those come under budget, that money will become available for something else.
Thank you. All right, Town Manager Supplemental Report, we went over the ten minutes, but I thought it was an important discussion.
Agreed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I did want to mention on solid waste and recycling, you know, again, as, as Peter McConity noted earlier, we're, we're keenly aware of the, the shortfalls of Republic Systems in keeping up with their scheduled pickups. And it is something that we are very focused on seeking to address. I, I wish I could promise you a quick solution, but at this point, it does not lend itself to a, a simple and quick solution. But part of the context I did want to mention to the board and to the public, the Public Works Director working with the Finance Director, outside counsel and former town manager, had been working on a renewal of that curbside collection contract. And we were able to bring that to a close. And unfortunately, there was not competition for that contract. So the, the cost has gone up significantly. We anticipated that, I say we, Jennifer Mullen, Peter McConity, Julian Susso anticipated that. So there was a substantial increase in, included in the budget. And as far as the fixed costs, for the, the contract is a combination of fixed costs and there are some pass-through costs related to fuel and recycling. So we're, we're close to being within budget based on the contract that was approved. The, the one silver lining that we do have with the contract that was executed, it is with, again, with Republic Services. The new contract actually started June one. We do have better enforcement provisions in this contract than we had in the previous one. So we will be seeking to use that and hopefully have better success in having the contractor live up to their contract requirements. The Mayflower Wind hearing, June eighth at six P M. at the Lawrence School Auditorium was mentioned a couple of times. I did want to mention just a couple of details that, that I spoke with Chair Nancy Taylor about. We are going to open up with some preliminary remarks in terms of the select board and the select board's role and, and goals with this project to date and provide some guidelines for the conduct of the hearing itself. And then we will turn over to a Mayflower Wind representatives for a presentation. And we've asked them to target about fifteen minutes for their presentation. There's certainly a lot of ground to cover, but the primary intent is to provide some information to the public, but then to allow the public to comment and ask questions. I also did want to mention that we will have a representative of the engineering firm that the town has hired. So this is Exponent is the name of the firm retained by the town to inform the town's interests. They do not work for Mayflower, not affiliated with Mayflower. And they have a host of consultants on issues related to this project. But the, the one individual who will be present for the hearing is an EMF consultant. We, you know, we've heard some concerns about the health impacts of EMF. So we will have someone there who will be able to speak to those questions. I wanted to mention a couple of other staffing and hiring updates. The board is aware, the Human Resources Director has, has left to take another opportunity with another town. We had a nice send-off for Denise Coleman that a couple of you were able to join us for. And for the time being, I am overseeing the office. And I, I did want to give a special thanks to the two, to Kathy Belair, who's stepping up and taking on some added responsibilities in that office in the absence of the, the director. And I also wanted to thank Kristin Nickerson, who used to work in the Personnel Office, but took a promotion, is now working for the police chief. But she is helping us out in the Personnel Office. And she's keeping up with her personnel, her police department work and also helping out in the Personnel Office. And there is some small compensation that goes along with those added duties. But it's, it's more work and it's more stress and I wanted to thank them personally and publicly for that.
Thank you.
And finally, I sent the board a note on this earlier, but I wanted to reiterate it also for the public's awareness as well. We had another, another resignation in the Recreation Department, unfortunately. This is one of the three Recreation Program Directors that we have reporting to the Recreation Director, Joe Olenek. And with that vacancy, I've conferred with Jennifer Mullen. And it was really at the suggestion of Joe Olenek. He and I had been talking about potentially reinstating the Assistant Recreation Director position. And with this vacancy, we do have the budget flexibility to, instead of filling the same position that we had, I'm going to be filling it with an Assistant Recreation Director position. This is something that the Recreation Committee has been strongly advocating for. And I, I do feel it's the right thing to do for the town's interests. It's helpful for retention and it's important for succession planning.
Thank you. Select Board Reports.
Well, I got to report something on a personal note. I'm going to have a little surgery tomorrow and I might not be able to get to the Mayflower Wind thing. I was expecting that it might get canceled when we heard some news about the change of plans recently, going to the other site as their primary site. But are we going to be on the stage at the Lawrence School?
Yes, that was the plan.
I believe that we are.
We'll see how it goes, I'll know better tomorrow after.
Yes, and I'm, you know, we certainly will cover for you.
Yeah.
Don't worry about that.
Hope it goes well.
Yeah. It's, it's not really life-threatening, but it's going to be a little debilitating, taking a big chunk of my skin off my leg. And you're going to go back a week later and have it graft, so.
Well, keep us posted, we have a busy week. So if you need something, please let us know.
All right, thank you.
I could report maybe an update that might be of interest to the town as a whole, but to you also as board members. I've informally been representing the town on Dobbsco, Friends of Dobbsco Board and just attending whenever I can. And they had a, a meeting recently. And I thought since really the keepers' houses, which have been renovated to a great extent, haven't really been open to the public, that you might like to know what happened in there. And I did kind of get a rundown and I got my first chance to go in there myself last week. So this is, this is what a lot of our CPC money has actually gone, has been invested in. So this is a report. They, they actually created a, a more open floor plan to allow for museum exhibits. They have new windows, which is part of the energy conservation issues. There are fresh paintings throughout the entire building. And it was two houses at one time, but throughout the two houses. There's track lighting for wall exhibits. There's a security system installed now, which makes it a little easier to monitor, you know, the brewery and activity. There's electric heat pumps instead of the old oil burner, which is moving us toward, you know, more renewable energy sources, which is making it a forced hot air system. And then I do want to make, oh, and they're, they're actually in the process of, of replacing some of the floors with refit, repurposed yellow pine, which was the original material used in the floor. It's very tough, it's almost like oak. And they've been having some trouble with the, the provider. And then just to mention that, site work is still not completed and that's the reason why the building hasn't been more accessible to people. But they're working toward that then, including doing fundraising aside from, you know, community preservation act money. So that's, that's just a quick report there. Wanted to mention that the Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association has a Zoom meeting this Friday at seven thirty. Just to keep you on your calendar. There's the One Cape Summit coming up, August first and second. I always found that to be a very valuable conference because they take a look at these common issues that we have across the entire Cape. And it's at the Aquoset Resort in Harwich. It's kind of a haul to get there, but it's a beautiful place to spend, you know, a couple of days. So I keep that in mind and the town just always reimburses for our travel expenses. And, and, and it is, you, you're not going to pay for your lunches and meals there. And then associated with that is a, a meeting of the Cape and Islands Leaders Association to breakfast one day. So sort of fold it into that event, just to keep that in mind. There's a, a request for a proclamation, a proclamation for the bus station. The bus station is now a hundred and fifty years old. Did you get that? It would be nice, I think, for us to create a proclamation and.
I think that's, we've.
That's in the works?
Yes.
Great. And I think they want, they would like to frame it and hang it in the bus station so other people can see it publicly. So I'll pass that on to you. The Affordable Housing Committee mailed out a memo to all of us, looking at two different opportunities for investing in affordable housing. That's using existing facilities, existing buildings. Of course, the benefit of that is that we can use a developer to develop. We're not talking about a long development process where we have to buy the property and all that sort of thing. There's two programs. One is, and it, and they each target people of different side, a different income categories. And relative to the average median income in the area. Let's see, the first one is a home buyer's down payment closing cost supplement of up to thirty thousand dollars each. And that applicant would, that, that, those applicants would be qualified if they earn less than a hundred and twenty percent of the AMI. The second program is called the Housing Opportunity Purchase Program, or HOP. And it finances the gap between the affordable price and the selling price for first-time home buyers, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per applicant. And they must earn less than eighty percent of the AMI or qualify. So those are two programs that might help us, but they are going to use existing homes and not developing new homes. So it's, idea is to accelerate getting them available to people who need them and know that's a big need. And then, oh, and of course, the other thing is it, it could save the town, town money because if we can invest that money now, you know, then the inflation costs that go along with building, you know, we're talking about development times are four or five years long. So we're sort of putting our money, investing our money when it's worth more by taking advantage of these kinds of opportunities. So they're pitching that to us and they'll be coming to us at the next meeting, I think.
Yes, we'll be.
So there'll probably be a little bit more discussion about that. And then, that's it. Oh, I, I certainly enjoyed Memorial Day service.
That was very well done, that was on my list, Sam, thank you very much.
Any reports?
Yes, Sam, thank you for the information about Dobbsco. I just took some friends who were visiting there and were curious about what was happening there. This week, I welcomed twenty of my interns this summer in the Woods Hole Partnership Education Program. We're a co-director. And it's relevant because we had a panel today of PEP alumni to come in and talk to the new PEP students about their experience and to give them some advice. And one of our PEP alumni is Christina Lovely, who works in our Marine and Environmental Sciences Department. She was, she was around before I was around, so she was at our very first PEP cohort in two thousand nine. So she came back and talked to the students and it was really awesome to hear her talk about how much she loves her job, working for the town, how it's like her dream job. So that was really encouraging. Then I have three PEP II researchers. So these are students who have done my program before, but are coming back for a second experience. And one thing they do is they partner with the Falmouth Public Schools. And so they each are matched with a teacher. So they share their match with teachers at Lawrence and they take their research and put it into the classroom. So it gives them an opportunity to practice communicating their science to the public and it also gives a resource to the Falmouth Public Schools and connects that better to Woods Hole.
Anything else? That's great.
That's it.
That's a lot. Mr. Z?
Yeah, first off, I just want to express my gratitude with the, the Memorial Day parade. I never thought in my lifetime as a veteran, growing up in this town, that I would be leading with the rest of you that procession down the main street that I grew, grew up on. So for that, I, I couldn't, it was a highlight of, you know. So for that, I, I couldn't, it was a highlight of, you know, my adult life. After that, I went to the, the reef lane at Deacon's Ave, and there were veterans there in excess of a hundred years old. What I did notice while I was there is the memorial needs a little work. I spoke with some veterans, and I asked them, Madam Chair, if they'd reach out through you. They wanted to volunteer their time to keep care of that. And Mr. Dufresne had, wasn't there yet, I think he was, his time's got screwed up, but I asked them to reach out through you for guidance on that.
Great. I have not heard as of yet, but thank you.
But I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Awesome. Okay, discussion for future agenda items. I would like to just go back to what you had said, Mr. Johnson, stop, about Republic, if we can make sure the trash pickup service, if we could put that on as an agenda item. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
So this week will be the, the last Transportation Committee meeting with the current Chair and Vice Chair. They both decided that they're not going to continue after their current term ends during June. So that'll be reorganization of that committee, and I'd like to get a resurgence of action from the Select Board regarding their initiatives. I'm going to ask the new Chair to kind of make a little more concise objectives and bring something to the board that's a little more easy to decipher, because they've sent us a lot of stuff. We haven't done a lot with what they've sent us. They're a little disappointed, I think. The two that are not willing to continue feel like the board should have been more supportive of their actions, so I'd like to refocus when they get reorganized and give them a fair shot. I'm going to try to work with them on this coming meeting to ask them to kind of get a little more focused, and, and I know if we have new ideas every, every two weeks, we're not going to be able to keep up with it. And I told the current Chair that, you know, a year or two ago, that that wasn't well received. They feel like we're not effective enough if we can't keep up, so.
Could we, as that board is reorganizing and it's going to change, I'd like to revisit their mission statement?
Okay.
And what it is that they are responsible for, because I, I think we need to, to really keep our minds also on transportation. And so I would like, before, before we even, you know, go back that way, I think we need to sit with the board, come up, you know, look at their mission statement and see where they're going.
For redefinition, is that what you said?
Just to revisit it and see if, see if they're, they're doing, or they feel that that mission statement works for them, or if we need to tweak it, or, but transportation needs to be their focus.
Understood.
Anything else?
Hmm.
For future agenda items? I, I would ask.
We have been getting requests, so I have to go back through my emails to check what they are, but I think there are a couple that we're missing right now, but I'll, I'll get back to you on that. Sorry, I don't have that prepared.
Do we?
Well, I have, I mean, there are, there are some, I'm not sure the ones that Mr. Brown's referring to. I have a, a working list that I've shared with the Chair and the Vice Chair. I don't know if you want me to review that now, or just be prepared to talk about it on Wednesday and.
We can talk about it on Wednesday, because we have some short-term and then some long-term.
Right.
And I just don't want to.
Maybe they're already on that.
They, I think they are.
Okay.
I think the emails, you're exactly right. I think I took the, the content of the emails, and we put them on, on that list.
Very good.
So, thank you, I just didn't want to forget.
Okay.
The other thing, I just would like people to be thinking about as we're, as we move through the summer, and I think we talked about, you know, our, our retreat and maybe doing our retreat in the fall. Anything in terms of how we structure that, if you want to give me any feedback or any thoughts about how we make the very best use of that time, and how we focus on our priorities? I really want to make sure that, that we come out of that retreat with something that's really workable and doable.
So I've, I know I've said that I would prefer to have something in the fall, just because of my personal summer schedule, I have twenty-one interns this summer, it's very busy. And I think I also mentioned a while ago about having perhaps multiple days, so we can have discussion on one day about specific items, and we have some time to think about it, and then come back another day before we make any decisions. So I'm, I'm still interested in something like that.
And so that's the kind of feedback I'd like as we, as we plan moving forward. And then the, the other thing I'd really like to have at some point, and I don't know what this is going to look like, or if this, how we do this, but I would like Town Council to really do some training with us around the open meeting law and the running of meetings and what we, you know, I just, because I think we're really working to, to tighten things up, and I'd just like some assistance from Ms. O'Keefe to help us with that. I think it would be really useful.
I'm just going to comment, if I could, I like, you know, the idea of the retreat is great, but to do it only once a year, I think is very limiting to us. And I'd like to think about maybe a spring and fall retreat to realign, because if we decide what's important at one point in what, in the year, and then have to go through the whole year bound by that as our only stuff that's important, you know, things change as the year goes on.
And also, how do you measure your progress? Right? So if we, we set our, our goals in September, and, and then we just go and we revisit them, or we tweak them, or we change or modify, I think that's a good idea. And I also think that breaking it up and having one or two days, you know, maybe they're only half-days twice a year, might be really, really helpful. So those are things that we can certainly think about moving forward. Anything else for future agenda items?
Are we still on for a meeting on Thursday, the second week?
Yes.
Okay, I hadn't heard anything. I know you reached out to us.
But you got the email.
I didn't check today. It was all day.
We have an executive session on Thursday.
Yeah, we had a couple of those.
Okay.
Have you received it?
It's on my calendar.
All right, good, good. No, Sam, the, you know, because I would have dropped the ball. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sub moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.